I'll call the Monday, November 2nd, 2015, as a cause regular council meeting to order, and ask those in the audience who would like to join the council and myself in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving now to audience comments. Citizens' comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Anyone from the public who desires to speak this evening will have an opportunity to do so. When recognized, please come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit those to the clerk. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If the speaker is out of order, I will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat. If the speaker does not comply, I will ask him or her to leave the council chambers. Again, citizens' comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, first on the list, Annette Peterson, followed by Kate Kaluzny.
My name is Annette Peterson, and I've provided my comments and my contact information to This didn't fall off the cabbage truck tonight, and neither did the mayor or council members. I think they know rumor, hearsay, innuendo, the things I was accused of last week. I'm sure they can discern whether that is the fact or not. Courtney Jaren has indicated that the purpose of the four affidavits was to justify her trespass notices. In them, Regina Poirier, David Wagner, Gregory Wagner, and Colleen Perry were accused of abusing Lee Sheeler. Not only did abuse not take place, Lee was not a vulnerable adult. The statute says a vulnerable adult is someone who's over 60 years of age and who does not have the functional, mental, or physical ability to care for himself. That was not Lee Sheeler. DSHS and the Issaquah Police confirmed there was no elder abuse reports submitted. Furthermore, the Issaquah Police also found no probable cause in investigating Courtney Jaren's trespass notices. Yet Courtney Jaren continues to publish and speak as if these four people are guilty of elder abuse, and this Halloween newsletter is her last occasion for printing that and distributing it. Courtney Jaren was a mandated reporter in her June 30th newsletter, but in this Halloween newsletter, she's a volunteer reporter. So mayor and council members, if she wants to be a voluntary reporter, I think we should let her. But is that really what the city needs with regard to managing the senior center? I think you need an executive director who views herself as an employee of a social service. You want an executive director who gladly accepts the responsibilities of a mandated reporter because she takes seriously her stewardship over the seniors of this city. And you want an executive director who's sincerely interested in the vulnerable adults in the city. That would not be Courtney Jaren because by her own admission, she only wants to be a voluntary reporter, and she excluded any funds for elder abuse programs in her proposed budget for 2016. On that basis alone, in the best interest of the seniors of Issaquah, the council should vote to defund Issaquah Valley Seniors. Problem solved. And it was solved by Courtney Jaren herself and supported by every member of the Board of Directors and by her attorney, as he indicated two weeks ago. Courtney Jaren and her attorney have also stated that Issaquah Valley Seniors is a private charity. Well, there's only two choices, a private charity or, I mean, a public charity and a private foundation. IVS performs a public function for the city on city-owned property with public funds. That is a public charity in the eyes of the IRS. So again, if the board and Courtney Jaren want a private foundation, I say let them have at it, just not here and just not at the senior center. A public charity is what's in the best interest of the seniors of Issaquah.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. And I suggest that is reason enough to defund Issaquah Valley Seniors. Problem solved. Thank you very much.
That's correct. Hi, Kate Kaluzny, 441 Northeast Alder. I've lived here since 2006 and about 10 miles away since 1989. I want to speak a few words of regret for the people who are volunteers here in the city of Issaquah. I've served with plenty of organizations as a volunteer and officer, everything from a church group to a King County Unincorporated Area Council to statewide age discrimination and employment person for AARP. Anyone would have to think twice about volunteering to be on a board or an officer of a nonprofit after hearing and reading about the management at the senior center. To consolidate two statements by city council members, not unfairly, I hope, not one dime to those who do not share Issaquah values, ouch, sued for $100,000, ouch again. Gigantic alleged tax bills, ugh, a new corporation in the offing that may walk away from the old one and its possible liabilities. What a dirty deal for those poor volunteer directors. It seems to me justice and fairness demand that the audit occur before precipitous action by the city of Issaquah. The volunteer board members ought to have some official clarification, not just be jettisoned under a cloud of suspicion, changing allegations, and smoke and mirrors. Dave Kapler suggested at the council's October 19th meeting, some new corporation akin to that of the food bank to be recognized by the city with an advisory board. Does this mean that some 800 or 900 members of the senior center will lose their voting rights? Do you go to Olympia to change the structure of Issaquah government if you do not like some city actions? No, you vote. Every year, we vote for half our board. The dissidents could use the democratic processes to change the senior center's management in 12 months or less. Less if the other board members can be persuaded that change is needed. Where is the fire? Why this maneuvering instead to set up a brand-new structure? Are they scared they would lose if they were more transparent, more forthcoming? It is truly a puzzle to many of us, what the heck is going on? Members of the center have heard plenty of allegations. I think they too are entitled to know what is going on by studying the audit results before action is taken by the city, not afterwards when it would be too late. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robyn Kelly, 155 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, Issaquah. I live and work in Issaquah. And tonight, I'd just like to thank the council for all of your support for Salmon Days. The dust is finally settling. I can put a whole sentence together. I wanted to let you know how much we appreciated it and give you just a start of some of the information that we're seeing. So flipping fun, and it was. We had great weather and great crowds, and we're still hearing wonderful comments from citizens who participated in it, from people who visited the community, from business owners. We had a voicemail just last week that said they live and work in Issaquah, their business is in Issaquah, and they gave us five stars for the efficiency, and we've worked really hard to try to make it be as smooth as possible, given what the structure is and how it does hinder some movement in town. This is just one of the smiling faces out of the thousands that were at the festival. Here's another one. Actually, two. We're always honored to have the mayor ride in our parade as a VIP, and he had an especially hot-looking car. And we were proud and prideful when we saw our citizens that were involved as veterans and as the youth coming up, supporting our country in the way that they do. Pardon? So sharing the stage, if you will, at Salmon Days this year, 70 Issaquah nonprofit and service organizations participated in Salmon Days. 70, it's unheard of. These groups had an assortment of activities, projects, and initiatives, some raising funds for their organizations, others promoting and increasing awareness about their organizations, but all supporting our community and its interests. These are the 70 nonprofits that participated in Salmon Days this year. Raising dollars in support, not, the numbers aren't all in yet because a lot of the nonprofits meet once a month, and so they're still getting their information together and reporting to us, but preliminary reports appear that it'll be over $610,000 raised by nonprofit and service groups at Salmon Days this year. We had furry friends. We had 428 vendors, so 70 nonprofits, as I've said. Arts and crafts, we had vendors coming from eight different states to Salmon Days. Food vendors came from Washington and Oregon, and our field of fun had vendors from four different states. Together, they raised more than 1.4 million so far. They haven't all reported yet. And all of the money that they raised, the sales tax income that they raised at Salmon Days, they're compelled to report to the Issaquah Tax Code. We had very few conflicts. We had amazing volunteers. We had many dignitaries and VIPs and just a lot of fun. We had families volunteering together and participating together. We had a Guinness Book World Record met. We're in the record books. Check. We had our youth showing their music expertise on the corner, and it was fun to have them set up impromptu. And we want to thank the city again for all of their support in making this happen and creating this opportunity for the 70 nonprofits and our citizens and our greater community. So here are just some of the smiling faces and views to remember, and we hope we can do it again next year, October 1st and 2nd. Thank you very, very much.
Gregory Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor Butler and the city council members. My name is Gregory Wagner, and I have lived at 24016 Southeast 111th Street for 37 years. I'm here tonight to once again ask you, the city council, to consider having the Parks and Recreation or another MPO take over the operations of Issaquah Valley Senior Center. It has been made very clear for the past months that the current director, Courtney Jaren, and the board members have not performed their duties in the best interests of the Issaquah Valley Seniors or the city of Issaquah. I, myself, and others have taken a stand to bring attention to the city council, our concerns over the mismanagement of the Issaquah Valley Senior Center and its board members. I am very disappointed that the pool room is still not open for our members to play pool. The pool room has been closed down since August 3rd, 2015, for Salmon Days, which we all know was over October 4th, 2015, and here we are, November 2nd, 2015, and still the pool room is closed. Director Jaren wants to make the pool room into a thrift store. On October 13th, 2015, City Administrator Bob Harrison sent Director Jaren an email stating and showing that the thrift store is not permitted use at the Issaquah Valley Senior Center. So why is the pool room allowed to still be closed? As long as Director Jaren and the board members are allowed to be in charge, the Issaquah Valley Senior Sale will continue to be dysfunctional and will continue to lose members. Is this what you, Mayor Butler, and the city council want? I don't believe that you want it for one minute. So I'm asking you, Mayor Butler, and the city council members, to do the right thing for our wonderful senior center members and have the Parks and Recreation or another MPO take over the operation of the Issaquah Valley Senior Center. Respectfully submitted, Gregory Wagner.
That's the last on my list.
Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening who has not signed up? Yes, sir. If you would come forward, please, followed by you.
Where do I sign up?
No, you don't need to sign up. Just come up, identify yourself, and speak.
Okay. My name's Dave Taylor. I live on 1485 24th Avenue Northeast, Issaquah. Lived there since 2006. There were a couple of public meetings in the last two weeks on the plan to put turf fields in Central Park. I was away on travel, so I didn't get a chance to comment, so I thought I'd come down tonight. I live down the end of 24th Avenue that's away from the fields, so I'm not really affected by the lights, and I know some people have concerns about that. I'm not going to direct my comments to that. I have a sixth grader and a fourth grader who play sport in the fall, in the winter, in the spring, and in the summer. So obviously, we're going to get a lot of benefit from any additional sports fields that are put in. But having said that, I'm also a taxpayer, and I'm a little concerned that the plan as it's laid out has not, does not appear to have had the depth of thought put into it that maybe it needs, what other options are out there for where the fields need to be located. There are concerns over the traffic that's going to go into the Highlands. To me also, it seems like the fields are way out of town. You know, if they were more centrally located, if they were located in an area where there are businesses nearby, I think there'd be a lot better use made of them. The people using them would be able to make use of the businesses nearby. They're kind of stuck out on their own up there. And one of the things you do see if you go into the park is that, you know, people use the fields there, Pad 1, I think it is. They use it for playing sport, unorganized sport, if you like. People go fly kites, they kick a ball around, they throw a frisbee. That facility is going to be lost to the community if we put in fields that are only available for organized sports. And I believe we spent a quarter of a million dollars just a few years ago putting drainage in on those fields, so that money's going to be effectively thrown away if we put the, spend whatever it is, 1.5 million on the turf fields, which seems like a reasonable chunk of change to be throwing away. So anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Sir?
No, sir. It's the short here.
Oh. I'm sorry. My apologies.
It's been happening to me my entire life. My name is Jean Wiseman, and I live on 1705 24th Avenue Northeast, and I'm also here to talk about Central Park. I moved here from Ireland just over 10 years ago and fell in love with Issaquah when I saw it because it's got that small-town feel that I'm used to, even though, you know, the town I come from probably has the same population, and we think it's a big city. But also because when I saw the Highlands, I saw a walkable community where there's space for the kids to play. I was pregnant with my first child when we moved over. I had two more since, so now I've got three kids who play in that park all the time. We're not a family that's in all the organized sports, so if that gets turned into another artificial turf field, my kids have lost their place to play. It freaks me out a little bit in this country that kids' lives are so structured and so scheduled, and parents seem to spend all their time ferrying kids from one organized activity to another, to school, to dance, to this, to that. Kids have no time to play, but at least right now, if they do get time, there's space. If we turn that into another artificial turf field, well, number one, I won't let my kids on it even when it's not being used because I'm not sure that whole artificial turf thing is even safe. I've seen reports about plastics and I don't know what. But, you know, there's no, you know, if it's going to be permanently tied up with soccer teams and lacrosse teams and whatnot, where's the space for the community kids and the opportunity for building that sense of community for those that don't want to be involved in organized sports? So, you know, parking is going to be a nightmare, traffic is going to be a nightmare, but my biggest concern isn't either of those, even though I know my street's going to be full of cars parked because there's no space for them anywhere else. My concern is really about losing that space for free play and unorganized sports. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Please.
Is there time to talk about?
If you'd like, come to the mic. You can speak about any topic you would like.
Thank you, Fred, and the rest of the council members. I'm here to talk about--
Would you identify yourself?
Excuse me, my name's Ashley Saunders, and my parents have been going to the senior center for quite a while here, and I know a lot of other people go to senior center. And I've heard talk about not funding it. I think that's totally outrageous, and I don't know, you know, the whole thing about Courtney on the situations, but that should be an investigation. And I feel that she's actually a very good coordinator of the senior center. And for another reason, I think that should be left out of it, and the funding should go on. It should never, I would not like to see the senior center closed in any means, and if it ever did get to that close, I would protest, and I would get a lot of people to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who, yes, ma'am, if you would, please?
Thank you. My name is Wendy Pender. I live at 95 First Avenue Northwest. I also work in Issaquah. I have a gerontology certificate from the University of Washington and a master's degree from the University of Pittsburgh. I was so pleased, when I moved to Issaquah about six months ago, to see the active, abundant offerings at the senior center. I thought, this is a place I can look forward to growing old. I would hate to see defunding occur at this time. I understand that if that happens, if the city pulls out, the senior center basically stops being there for me and for everybody who's taking part in the activities now. I've visited it four or five times. I see lots of wonderful, happy people, lots of great activities, and I would encourage you to allow the funding to go on. Do whatever you need to do behind the scenes in terms of getting an audit or whatever. I don't, I'm not that familiar with all the issues that are going on at hand, but please have it be there for all of our vulnerable adults and just our not-vulnerable adults. I want to go there, too. Thank you.
Yes, please.
My name is Madeline Harris, and I've lived in Issaquah for 36 years. And my husband and I have chose this town because it was so wonderful. Even though we're a little crowded now, we still love Issaquah, and he has done many things for the town, but that's not important right now. I'm here to talk about the senior center. I was told last week, or asked, why don't you leave? And then again today, someone asked my sister, why don't you leave the senior center if you're unhappy? We're unhappy about what's going on, but we don't want to leave. We want some other people to leave. I brought Pam Poirier to the senior center to do an R program, and people just love Pam. And Courtney just wrote a letter about how wonderful and beautiful Pam Poirier is. Well, when she was there a couple of years, Courtney had a function for Pam Poirier, who she loves and I love because she's my good friend. And I went early because Pam couldn't be there at the time it was starting, and she asked me to save her a seat. I put a coat down to save two seats for us after I left my coat. I came back, my coat wasn't there. For some reason, I went to Courtney. I thought maybe she would know where it was, Courtney Jaren. She said, I threw it in the other card room, and you're insane. So this is how she treats some of her seniors. She's not as wonderful as some of the people have told you, and that was my experience with her. I used to volunteer a lot at the senior center. I do not volunteer there at all anymore because of what Courtney Jaren did to me, and that hurt me very much, and she's hurt a lot of my good friends, but I can't speak for them, but they're afraid to speak, and that's what they told me. They're afraid to come and speak to you. But I know there are quite a few people that have a problem at the senior center. It is broken, and it needs to be fixed, and I thank you all for listening to me.
Yes, ma'am. Followed by your next staff or her.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Julia Overstreet. I'm a board-certified podiatric physician and surgeon. I'm speaking today because I am the administrator of the foot care program at the Issaquah Valley Senior Center. I understand that there had been some questions in previous meetings about that foot care program, and I wanted to give you a chance to ask me any of the questions that you might have had based on previous comments.
This is not a question-and-answer session. It's an opportunity for you to address the council.
Thank you very much. To tell you a little bit more about myself, I was in private practice for 25 years in Overlake on staff at Overlake and Evergreen. I'm now, and was then, still, a clinical professor at the University of Washington, teaching in my specialties of high-risk foot care, infectious disease, and vascular insufficiency. And I'm the coadministrator of the Medical Ethics and Research Department at Madigan Army Hospital, Department of Vascular Surgery. There are programs of foot care in most senior centers across the country. It is a necessary gift to them to allow them to walk comfortably and without the problems of ingrown toenails, infections, and problems that could happen from that. Most of the programs charge between $15 and $25. This is nationwide. It's provided, the care's provided by a variety of types of individuals. Apparently, and this is hearsay, a few years ago, when Courtney took over the directorship, Courtney, whose father was a renowned podiatrist himself, she certainly understood infection control and appropriate patient care and realized that the person providing the care at that point, although a wonderful person, was an LPN who had never been trained to do foot care, was not insured to protect the center, and was not following any of the infection control guidelines. She was not cleaning her instruments properly, I was reported, and while she soaked the patient's feet, she used the same bucket with the same water and the same towels with every patient. Because Courtney's direct emphasis, since I have known her, and certainly then, was to provide the best quality care for all of the seniors under her-- to provide the best quality care for all of the seniors under her jurisdiction, as it were, she went out looking for a better situation. I got involved with the center. That was five and a half years ago. I can tell you that the same infection control guidelines, protocols, patient care faculties that I use at the, or employ at the University of Washington at Madigan Army Hospital are employed there at the Senior Center. We have registered nurses and myself providing all the care under my malpractice insurance, which holds the center harmless. While I could certainly charge for those services, we, I turn over the money that is collected to the center because I believe in the center. I have seen in the five and a half years I have been here, like one of the previous speakers said, how amazing an asset it is for the seniors. They are happy, they have meaning there. I've gotten to know so many of them. Many of them are here today, all hugs. It is a high-quality program, and she works very hard, and I'm one example of how she works when there is a deficiency. She works at changing it so that the quality care and the quality presentations and programs offered and the environment in the center are the best. And I know that, I've talked to other directors of senior centers because they want this kind of program in their center that I'm providing. I don't have the energy, but they have also commented, gosh, she runs such a good program. I have personally heard this from other directors, and I want to encourage you to please ask me at a different forum. I've submitted a three-page letter of fact to this committee about a month ago, which I'm assuming got distributed. I'm happy to answer any questions about my program, about my interaction with the center, anything at all that I can do, but my strong wish is that you would allow her to continue the phenomenal work she's done as an advocate for our amazing seniors here in Issaquah. Thank you.
My name is Victoria G. Tranilla. I just want to say and talk about Ms. Courtney. First of all, Ms. Courtney, I have called her three times and never returned my call. Second of all, she had the police officers knocking on my door saying that I broke the restraining order, and then they found out that it was the wrong date. I do not appreciate police officers knocking on my door. I lived here sixty-five years. Rodney Anderson is my father-in-law, and he is the mayor of Issaquah many years ago. And I think Ms. Courtney needs to stop putting trespass, no trespass, on the Issaquah Senior Center because she tried to do that to me, and the council said no. And I just want to tell you that I know Courtney, and I used to volunteer over there. I don't want to volunteer there anymore, no more, because too many things going on. And, and I love the Senior Center. I used to love the Senior Center. I will not go there no more, even the restraining orders drop. I will not work for Ms. Courtney ever again. And I also want to say that now they're trying to take the pool tables away for the senior people. There's people that play mahjong, there's people that play cards, there's people that play this, but there's also people that love to play that pool table. Why are they taking that away? And that should stay. And I don't go there, but I hear people are upset at the Senior Center, and I'm upset at the Senior Center for having the police officer knock on my door. I gave her three hundred dollars' worth of jewelry of my mother when she passed away. I asked it back, but she never returned my calls because I'm upset. And I thank you very much. Have a good day.
Is there any, I see a hand in the back. And is there anyone else after her desiring to speak? Sir, you'll be next after her.
My name is Marlene McGrath. I'm a senior citizen. I live at one forty-five Newport Way Northwest. I've been a citizen of this city for about fifteen years and a member of the Senior Center for almost all of that time. I'm shaking. I'm, 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 I'm hurt and I'm touched by this lady's words. I don't doubt them. I don't know what happened. Something did. But overall, my comments are, I want to know who's being punished by all of this conversation regarding the Senior Center. Where is the dialogue for the accused being questioned? But it seems that words on paper have not been heard. They've not been responded to, so I'm here tonight to give you some additional information. Let me just quote. I would like to speak to an issue that is brought up in the lawsuit where each of these people, Jared and the parish, the parish board, the, the board, are being sued for a million, for a, for a hundred thousand dollars. That's a million dollars per person who's making complaints, which total four. There, there is one issue that has come to my attention that I can give word to. That is the fact that claims have been made that Jared, Courtney Jared, is, is the cause of a poster that went up that was considered inappropriate. She was not that person. I am the person who designed, who thought up the past poster, and I passed it by four of my friends there at the Senior Center who thought it was funny and, and worthwhile because I was proposing that the general membership had an opportunity to sign a petition to say that they were supportive of the Senior Center. Let me say that in closing, what I said here. I would like to say that my, in a lawsuit against the director and her board members, claims that Courtney Jared was a mastermind of a poster approach that caused unhappiness amongst the people suing the Senior Center people is not true, not true. I am the sole author and poster of what had been, what I had hoped would lead to rallying the senior citizens in an effort to support the senior citizen. There was a pall hanging around the people left in the dark to what leadership had done, and I think you witnessed that in this lady's words, how she became disillusioned with the center. I meant to offer them hope and chose from a considered, what I considered was a fun approach. The poster was up for a day and a half. I removed it as soon as I heard that it was controversial. I never counted those people in my petition, but I guess it was about fifteen who had already signed. Prior to working up the courage to post my idea, it was shared with four friends and then two of the Senior Center assistants, who all recognized humor in it. Some days later, I shared it with Courtney herself, who also found it funny. I asked her opinion about the posting it and clearly stated that if I worked up the courage to do it, I did not want her associated with it. I posted it early on a Monday morning when few were around. I found myself too short to put it up, and someone came along and helped me with that.
You have thirty seconds if you conclude.
And so I just want to say publicly that the wrong person was being accused of this. I believe that she's also accused of some other things that should not be attributed to her and have been ignored by other people's words. I hope that you will consider the fact that there maybe are some other sides to the stories. And, and, and I want to say something I said at the beginning of this letter that I wrote to the parish, parish, and that has to do with-- It's, it's been a time of great sadness for many senior citizens during the past months of accusations, accusations regarding wrongdoing. To date, most seniors have reacted physically and mentally without knowing what has happened to cause the unpleasant tensions. Yet at the beginning of an unhappiest council member was a freely bending, was--
Ms. McGrath.
--at the beginning of the unhappiness--
Your time has concluded.
--a board member was freely bending--
Would you summarize, please?
--the center day after day with statements maligning the director--
Arlene. Arlene, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Sir, in the front row, if you would please. Followed by Craig, you're up after him.
Nelson Robert Still, two-three-eight-hundred Tiger Mountain Road. Hi, Issaquah. Hey. I was born in nineteen thirty-six, and my birthday's tomorrow, if anybody's interested. I was born, ah, so anyway, I was born in Glasgow. There's only two things matter in Glasgow, as whether you're a Catholic or a Protestant religion. Glasgow's the holiest city in the world, and it still is to this day. For some strange reason, I was born in a convent, which is Catholic, and that's outrageous. And it was not, I was always blamed for it, but it had nothing to do with me. Anyway, it was decided by the immediate family that I'd be sent to, and this is true to Australia when I was five, in nineteen forty. In Britain, in the thirties and the forties, if you're a naughty person, a child, you're sent either to Canada, Australia, or South Africa, or New Zealand. Just, they didn't want anything to do with naughty children. Anyway, what happened next? Oh, no. Aye, anyway. I can neither read nor write, so it's difficult. I've got to remember. And then my wife and I, she's, yeah, we've been together for seventy-three years. I met her in Glasgow in nineteen forty-three, and I realized that'll do me. Now, in Scotland in those days, the age of consent was five, so to wait two years, but I never did anything. We were married in nineteen sixty, sixty-one, fifty-five years ago. We've had four children, and they were all born on a Saturday so that mommy could go to work on Monday. That's true. So, oh, aye, so we left Scotland in nineteen seventy-one, when Britain was joining the common market. Fatal, would never work. I came to Canada, checked it out, even came to America and checked it out, brilliant in those days. And the way I entered America, I became a, really a citizen four days, which, and I spoke to a lawyer about it many years ago, and he said, that is fantastic, how I done it. He'd never heard of that, and he's, he did immigration for forty years, and he'd never heard of that. And she, and she said, don't tell him, and I won't. Anyway, we, we went to South Africa, and we stayed for thirty-- Sorry? Oh. Anyway, we stayed for thirty-seven years, and it was magic, fantastic. Now, my name was Nelson. I was born with that name. Mandela, that's not his real name, but anyway. The day I landed in South Africa, to the day I left, not one black person called me by my name. They called me the master because they realized I was a Sangoma. Now, Sangoma's a witch doctor. I'm, I'm a, what are you saying? She's interfering with me. Aye, anyway.
No, this is, this is not comedy hour.
I know that. I'm doing my best.
So if you have something of substance to say--
I have indeed.
--please say it, and I would ask the audience to show Mr. Still the proper respect--
Thank you.
--rather than mocking him and laughing.
Oh, they're not mocking me, no, wouldn't do that.
I'm sorry, if you have something to say, please say it.
I'm just describing myself as a really very nice person. I've been driving for sixty-five years. I've never had an accident in a car. I've had seventeen in a motorcycle, not serious. I've suffered a few horrible, I wear the kilt here regular, especially as people know, and this is the only place that I've ever been assaulted by a lady who lifted my kilt up and ran away, and I chased her, I couldn't catch her. How many minutes have I got to go?
You have less--
Oh, by the way, the real reason, I really cannot believe that someday, or some people are trying to close down the Senior Center. It's a piece of nonsense, and it's not going to work. I can tell you that now. Am I finished? Are you sure? Well, goodbye and thank you.
Is there, Craig, you're up next. Come to the microphone and speak.
My name is Craig Hanson. I'm the board president of Issaquah Senior Center, and I just wanted to make a comment about the pool room. It is not being done away with. It is being moved because we have better use for the room that it's in now. It's, it's a private room. It has two doors. You can carry on a conversation in there while lunch is going on, while conversation is going on in the other room, and it's just a better room for conferences and for presentations during lunch and like that. It can be used, it's just a better resource. And the pool table has to be, we can't just pick it up and move it. It has to be professionally moved. We are, it's, that process is being, is being, will happen sooner than later, so the pool, pool is not being done away with. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening and thank you. I'm going to stay on the microphone tonight. My name is Regina Poyer. I live in Issaquah. I am an advocate for expanding programs and services for seniors in our community to reflect the standards and values of our community. In regard to the IVSC, this means cooperating with other senior service agencies to provide affordable and volunteer services and working in collaboration with local organizations to deliver services or food to those who are in need. This includes working in cooperation with eastside friends of, eastside friends of seniors rather than trying to paint them as financial predators, as noted in the city's IVS review report of August. It's a sad day in our community when a senior suffers a stroke and lays on the floor for two days before being found. Many senior centers have programs to check on the welfare of other seniors. The IVSC does not. The center does not provide scheduled van service to pick up seniors for lunch. However, the Senior Center does provide van trips to four-star restaurants. There's something very wrong with this picture, and there's something very wrong with the values of the management of the IVSC when the president of the board has received over twenty-one thousand dollars in compensation to provide transportation. There is something very wrong with this picture when there is specific federal grant money available to provide transportation to seniors. There is a reason why center management does not apply for these grants, and a review of the nine nineties provides the answer. National Council of Nonprofits defines the principles of good management-- National Council of Nonprofits defines the principles of good management, of good governance, and defines what practices demonstrate accountability and transparency, as does the IRS. The IVSC management fails to adhere to any of these policies. Efforts made by the city regarding accountability and good, and transparency of the IVS have resulted in threats against the city, including stonewalling city officials, as well as incredible, as in incredible demands for production. I'm, I am specifically here tonight to dispel the idea that was planted into the minds of the public at the last full city council meeting, that I am uninformed. In fact, I am very informed, and I believe the city of Issaquah has been duped of nearly a half a million dollars over the past several years with fluffy narrative reports used to secure grant funding. There is not one nonprofit organization who'd, who would receive this much funding without an evaluation of programs and outcomes. The IRS reports and the Secretary of State records and the IVS calendars tell the truth. These are the facts. There is no hearsay in these reports, nor is my point of view limited. I have looked at hundreds of senior centers throughout the country, and, and I am fully aware of the full and rich opportunities offered by many, many senior centers, including our own state. The IVSC is the most pathetic example of any of them, considering their budget and what is offered and available to seniors in King County. Has anyone seen the quality of the IVS two-page newsletter? The board and/or their ghostwriter responded to a series of 22 questions presented to them by Bob Harrison on June 26th. One question is the following...
One minute remaining.
Regarding Form 990, is it reviewed by the full board each year before or after it's submitted? This was not answered properly.
Speak into the mic.
Oh, yeah, thank you for being my coach there. This was not answered properly, it was answered extreme, extremely convoluted. I would like to say that in terms of the board, $32,704 in travel expenses, which is noted on the 990s, were expenditures between the years of 2011 and 2013. Did the board members question this? The answer is no. Did the board approve a 75.3% increase in compensation for the director?
10 seconds.
In the IRS language, this is called an excessive benefit. And lastly, I would like to say, Mr. Adder is a liar. I did nothing to denigrate Dr. Overstreet. In fact, I have a lot of respect for Dr. Overstreet. What, what I object to is a clinical toenail trimming class being presented as a podiatry clinic. Dr. Overstreet doesn't do that, it's the director who does that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has not signed up, desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak? Is there anyone else after this gentleman who's not signed up to speak, desiring to Mr. Kapler, you'll, you'll follow him. Yes, sir.
I am Claudio Johnson S., J-O-H-N-S-O-N, space capital S., period. I live at Providence Point, and I have for five and a half years now. It was not my intention to speak tonight, but I'm doing so because I frequent the senior center. It's well worth coming down the hill from Providence Point to what I find a very congenial I come at least two times a week, on the days when there's a lunch, $3, not because of the price, but because people are gathered around a table in a very pleasant atmosphere. Some of those people are people who live where I do. They are neighbors of mine whom I never have an occasion to meet where I live unless I go to a major event. At the senior center, they are accepted, I am accepted, people from anywhere are accepted. It's international in scope, actually, and if one were to take photographs of people there on a regular basis, one would note by apparel, by complexion, that they come from many places. I hear, particularly tonight, many complaints about it. I'll not respond to those because I'm not privy to them. I'll only say that that is not apparent to me as a frequent visitor, and I'm most happy that there is a center. I was a little disturbed a while back when I read of Mr. Winterstein with the beautiful name, I'm most fond of that, about a comment that was reported in reference to you might withhold funding. That disturbed me, because were you to come and spend time with us at the center, you'd find it well worth funding. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else desiring to, Dave, you'll be after Mr. Kapler?
Good evening, David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Keeping the senior center building open, serving seniors is certainly a goal that I share with several of us that have very concerns about how those services are now being delivered. The board is supposed to be in charge of the place over there, and I don't think the board is doing their job. I have some real concerns about the director. Went over to the district court, and there's, she's been sued for a credit card debt, and on August...
I'm determined, that fact is not fair.
Please sit down.
On August 24th, they submitted, she submitted a document on the suit, an answer to the marital community. Defendant Courtney Bates-Jaren is a single female and not a member of a marital community. On September 17th, marital community response by Ms. Jaren. Defendant Courtney Bates-Jaren is a legally separated female. Now, I must say, I agree with Matthias on one thing, when he said two weeks ago on the 19th of October that she is his wife. Something, on legal documents, I don't believe she's telling the truth. I don't think she's telling the truth about a lot of things. November 15th, you should be seeing the 990 for 2014, that should be helpful. I think we're getting close to the tipping point. My wife is a big believer in the tipping point, when things build up. I was extremely disappointed on October 13th by the Services and Safety Committee decision. I saw a big change on the 19th, and I think the momentum to figuring out how we can really serve seniors is coming to Issaquah. We heard about one high-level service, and that is the clinic, the podiatry clinic. We also heard that there's meals twice a week, where most senior centers do it more often than that. We haven't heard about many services, because there are very few there. Thank you for your time.
You'll follow...
Good evening, council. My name is David Wagner, 360 Northwest Elgood Street, apartment K204 Issaquah. Been a resident of Issaquah off and on, except for 26 years in the military, for, since I wanted to come here tonight and tell you that this whole thing that hurts deeply, is I look out in this audience and I see people that were my friends, and now they're not. That hurts. Why? Because of this senior center stuff. I have not stood up here and lied to you, I've stood up here and told you the truth. Let me tell you some more truth. In a flyer that was put out this last weekend, "Dear friends and supporters, as you may know, Issaquah Senior Center has been under attack for several months. We believe the attack is being generated by a small group of people represented by an attorney. This dispute started when two people were served with, served by the Issaquah Police with trespass orders." Let's get to the truth. I'm one of those people. It was not a trespass order, it was a trespass warning. As I said at the last council meeting, you need two warnings before a trespass order is going to be issued. It was not a trespass order. It was also served by the Issaquah Police Department. They didn't invent it, they didn't do anything about it, other than to show up to serve the warning. If you look at the WAC, and I can give you the number later, but if you look at the WAC, the WAC says that before a trespass warning is given, you're entitled to, number one, know how you can in fact come back and appeal the process. That never happened in my case. I was never told how I could appeal the process. That's a fact. Whatever else is said, that's a fact. I was not given a warning, other than the trespass. And let me tell you, just like I told Josh Shear, when you're elected to the council, you come in, you take your seat. I was elected for my second term on the board on March 30th. On April 16th, a trespass order was written. No warning, no nothing, no mention, and I was escorted off of the premises. Never given a letter of who I harassed, what I did to deserve such a thing, and here it is now, saying that the police are the one who came up with this trespass order. Didn't happen. It happened just exactly the way I told you. Your Board of Directors and our Executive Director continue to serve and protect you in the capacity as voluntary reporters under Washington law. In her June 25th newsletter, she said that she was a mandated reporter. I looked up the law. The law says that anyone who runs a senior center or a similar center is a mandated reporter. Now, they're going back to a voluntary reporter. That's not the truth. Just wanted you to know those things. Last thing I want to tell you is a reminder, as I told Ms. Milligan, that on the 11th day of November at 11:00 a.m., we will have a veterans service which will honor all the veterans of the Issaquah area, and we hope that you will find your way there. Thank you.
Where's it being?
At the community center.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for accepting my remarks. I wasn't going to speak, I was asked not to speak, and I agreed that I wouldn't speak, but I am compelled to excuse the spousal commentaries. Mr. Kapler, I'm an investor and in business...
Can you state your name?
I am Dr. Jaren, J-A-R-E-N. You may rely on my address at 2611, it's a post office box in Issaquah at 98027. May I continue? I accept the 32nd benevolence at the end for a rejoinder. Once again, it's really important that a tragedy has happened. I like Dave Wagner. We probably were born in the same hospital. I was born in Renton, Washington. I'm a veteran of the Armed Forces. I do not speak about it because I choose not to. Some of us had painful experiences. I'm sure Colonel Wagner and you, Colonel Butler, had painful experiences as well, and you don't talk about them with very many people. The testimony that has confused this issue and injured feelings, people, emotions, and perceptions has a problem. It's the problem of omission. The omission has been the act of not telling the entire story. Don't take away somebody's money until you hear the entire story. Mr. Kapler said he wasn't allowed to become a member, but he omitted the fact that he walked into the senior center and said, "I'm a troublemaker." Mr. Kapler, you did say that. Can I be a member? Well, gosh, probably not this year, Mr. Kapler. We're not looking for troublemakers here in the senior center with 95-year-old people having lunch. Mr. Wagner, bless his heart, his civic work is amazing, he's dedicated his life to everything in Issaquah that he could find that he could help out with. He's made a mistake. He gathered together information from someone else, I suspect, who might be here tonight, about Courtney's work and career and circulated it. Fred, I know you got a copy of something on April 26th from David about Courtney's conduct in the city in Oregon. He was wrong. He's wrong now. He missed the point, but he's also seen affidavits about his behavior, and he's been in four public meetings saying, "I have no idea what happened, I don't know why I'm having problems, I can't understand why you don't love me," and, and we do love you. Think about it. You're a great guy, but there's a horrible misunderstanding that has no point in it. Go find the real facts. Fred Butler has Dave's memo, and it's false. Dave never came and asked, "Is what I have in my hand true?" He just got civic and went to a lot of other people with something that was false. Come on it, have Pete Marwic on it, have the American Association of Retired People come in. You've got one of the best senior centers in the United States, and you're paying 30 cents on the dollar to run it for 3,000 people. And furthermore, can I ask for somebody to be thoughtful? Oh, Regina, would you be thoughtful? Thank you, Regina. I think I've passed my point. Thank you, Fred. Thank you, council members. Go get the facts.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has not had an opportunity to speak?
Good for you.
I'm Jeanette Hudson, I live in Providence Point, and I've probably been a member of the senior center since 2007. I, all this started when Dave Wagner, Dave Wagner got trespassed, you all know that, that's the story. A lot of us don't like it. We liked Dave, we didn't know. Then the letter comes out, there's affidavits against Dave, so we're all waiting and waiting and waiting to see what's the truth. I've been, people are calling me and saying, "What's going on with the senior center?" I love the senior center. I go there, like, oh, I go to exercise twice a week. My friend and I, we decorate the senior center. We love to see, the people love to see how beautiful it looks, but I just, all this is just from the trespassing. Courtney does have good trips, she does, we don't know what she does behind, you know, every day, because we do our own thing. But I know you have a big question, I know it's, it's hard, but you've got to clear Dave Wagner's name before this will ever be done, because everybody's afraid. Are we going to get trespassed for saying something? I would tell people, "Read the paper, go to Channel 21." I got called in for that. I'm so upset. I said, "This is a scandal." They said, "Oh, no, it's not a scandal." I said, "Yes, it is, it's a scandal. I just can't sit there all night and listen to this, what's going on." Now, see how bad it's getting? And they are separating. We are separating. You don't know who your friend is, you don't know what to say to them, they'll go and run back and tell some... go and run back and tell somebody else. The rumors are unbelievable that's going on, all the lies of the rumors. Dave Wagner wants to run the senior center. Where are they going to move to? Then, the pool room really upsets me, because it was something the men could do. Most of the ladies are doing exercise. There are men and women playing cards, but the pool table, even, there was another fellow, I forget what, Doug, he used to, he used to be there on Saturdays. They used to open up the door to the guys on Saturday, and he would make a big salad, and it all, they're having a good time. My, my friend and I, a couple of times, we went in on a Saturday. They invited us to have lunch there, but we were doing our decorations, and we said, "No, no, you all do that." But you don't see that anymore. I mean, it's sad. The room was always a nice, clean room with two big pool tables. You almost should take a tour of the place, you know? I mean, I'm not saying nothing against Courtney, but if she did something wrong the wrong way, I mean, she's got a job and responsibility. And the affidavits, if there are errors in those affidavits, that has to be cleared up. I don't think, I don't know what you're going to do about the funding, but I, I tape your shows every, every time I see them, and I know Stacy, you were right on it. And a couple of you were right on it. Paul, I met you, you probably don't remember, I met you on 4th of July. My friend and I went to the cemetery to be behind Dave, to let him know, "We're here," you know? Because when you're crucified like that, it's tough. It's tough. I didn't expect to say this because it's so upsetting, but I'm glad I didn't start crying to you, but I know, I know it's a hard job. But, and so, but we're friends. My, my family even said, "Why do you bother going down there? Go to another center." But we have friends there, like the fellow from Providence Point. We have other people from Providence Point, husband and wife.
One minute.
She's got Parkinson's, wonderful couple. My friend and I, and we got a couple of other people, we go to their house and play cards with her a couple of times a month. She loves to play cards. She doesn't get out, when you have Parkinson's, you don't, you know, you can't do anything. Her husband has to be there if she has, you know, needs medicine. Now, these are the people. We love some of the people, but we don't want anybody to complain about us and...
32nd.
But I see there's a, you know, big division coming through, and it's bad, very, very bad. I don't know, I don't know if you can cure it. I don't know if money can do it, you know? They say money can do anything? No. It's got a, it's, it's deeper. And I just, I think Dave Wagner's name, if, if it's cleared, you know, first, the trespassing was bad, but then when we hear about affidavits, when you, everybody knows, you know, you're swearing.
Thank you.
I hope they're protected. Okay.
Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak? Audience comments are closed, and we're going to continue with committee reports, beginning with Councilmember Milligan.
Here we go. Hey, thanks, Tola.
Sure.
You're an engineer, right? I just wanted to report on the Chamber of Commerce meeting on October 23rd. We reported on many topics. Emily Moon was there with me, too. We talked about the East Lakes and Mamish project and funding for nonprofits and several topics, but I wanted to report back to you because I thought it was notable. Was there wanting us to know how much they appreciate and want to preserve the asset of parking, and how in a competitive retail world that parking is very important to them? And I know those are, it's a topic that we're, is current on our considerations, and so I'm passing on to you that. And that is all I have to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next Land and Shore Committee meeting will be here at 5:30 on November 12th, and we'll be looking at the amendments to the Central Issaquah Plan Development and Design Standards. The next meeting of the Growth Management Policy Committee, Policy Board, will be Thursday, November 5th, and it will be more discussion on comprehensive plan reviews and a policy discussion around conditional approvals of plans. And that's it for my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Services and Safety Committee will be meeting next Monday at 5:30. We are still looking for a location. There's been a little bit of shuffling of various meetings, but we have, we have, good news is we settled on a date and a time, and everything else we can figure out. We will definitely be looking at Agenda Bill 7037, Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan. Be looking at Agenda Bill 6806, Tibbetts Valley Park Tennis Lease Agreement. That should be a nice, quick, short conversation. There are other items that may potentially be on the agenda, including pending the Resolution of Consent Agenda today, Agenda Bill 7056, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an ILA with the public funders of Ready. Then, the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting Thursday, November 12th at 7:00 p.m. in Renton City Hall. That is a special date. The 6:00 p.m. Pre-Pick Workshop will be on Low-Impact Development and Municipal Stormwater Permits, and as of now, there is nothing actionable in terms of council review on that agenda. The King County Growth Management Policy Council will be meeting Friday, Friday, November 6th at 1:00 p.m. in PSRC Chambers. That is a special date and time. The focus will be, we will have a panel discussion on housing, annual discussion of affordable housing trends in the county, and a discussion and possible action on affordable housing policy statement. The good news is, I don't have to bring that to our council, because we actually have a tighter, more circumscribed internal policy than they're even considering for the county, so we lead the way in this area. We will also be getting an update on the Doocy Hill Notch Report, which isn't necessarily super important to this council, but is incredibly important to the Sumamish City Council. Then, the King County Regional Law and Social Justice Committee did not have a meeting in October. The King County Emergency Management Advisory Committee will next be meeting on Tuesday, November 10th, from 1:00 to 2:30 in the Regional Communication Emergency Coordination Center in Renton. That agenda has not been published yet. The Washington State Emergency Management Council will be meeting Thursday, November 5th, from 9:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon at Camp Murray in Tacoma, and the agenda, I don't have the agenda yet. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Shear.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee will next meet on Wednesday, November 18th at 5:00 p.m. in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. The agenda has not yet been finalized, and I will be working with our Public Works Engineering Director in the coming days to get that nailed down, and we'll get that up on the website as soon as we can. But I do know that we'll have a number of topics for the committee to discuss. Additionally, the Eastside Transportation Partnership is going to next be meeting on Friday, November 13th at 7:30 a.m. in the Bellevue School District Boardroom, and we're going to have a presentation from King County Metro on their Service Guidelines Task Force recommendations. We are expecting a presentation from WashDOT on I-405 Express toll lane early data, such as it is, and a review of the Technology Symposium that was held at the Mercer Island Community Center, and then some updates on legislative planning efforts. And finally, we will be starting to form the Leadership Nominating Committee for the partnership, and I'll just remind this body that another ETP representative will be needed for next year to join the mayor, presumptively, and another alternate will also be needed to replace Councilmember Milligan. So there will be openings, at long last, in ETP, for those of you who are interested in joining that exceptional body of elected officials and staff members from across the region. And with that, that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber. Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I forgot to mention one thing in my report that is, that I'd like just a second. I just want to point out that SCA nominations are actually due Thursday, November 12th, so I would invite my fellow council members to take a look at the call for nominations. There's a lot of really important boards out there. Thank you.
And with that, Councilmember Barber.
I'll report this evening.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors next meets at 4:00 p.m. on November 12th at Headquarters 175 Newport Way Northwest. I do not have an agenda at this time. Thank you.
Council President Winterstein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next council budget deliberation meeting is two nights from tonight, November 4th, here in this room. And to date, I'm aware of some additional deliberation items submitted by three of the council members. So if anybody still has anything they want us for special consideration, deliberation, to please get those into the administration and to me. And also, I would ask, too, that those topics should be complete, and remember, if there is an expense or revenue amount associated with them, that that should be included as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you. There will not be an executive session held this evening. Couple of things of interest. I participated in the Grange's 100th Anniversary Celebration on Monday, October the 26th, and proclaimed the day Issaquah Valley Grange Day. On October the 23rd, we honored former Mayor Ava Freisinger at the Ruth Keyes Tree Planting Ceremony. In April, you will recall that Ava received the Ruth Keyes Environmental Award for her leadership and dedication to environmental issues in the community. As part of this award, a tree was planted in honor of Ava's hard work and contributions, which exemplify Keyes' dedication to a sustainable vision. In that regard, a whole bunch of trees were planted on Saturday, October the 24th, at Confluence Park. Issaquah residents were joined by hundreds of volunteers throughout the region, and a number of city council members and myself attended also to plant the better part of 6,000 native trees and shrubs along the banks of the realigned Issaquah Creek. It was a fun, overcast, and at times rainy morning, but a lot of work got done. With that, that concludes my report, and we will now move to the consent calendar. And I would ask if the accounts payables and payroll for November the 2nd have been reviewed.
Yes.
Okay. And then I would ask the city clerk to read the consent calendar into the record.
Yes. The consent calendar was distributed to council advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by a single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of accounts payables and payroll dated November 2nd. Item B seeks approval of minutes for the council regular meeting of October 19. Item C, AB 7056, is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement by the fund, excuse me, public funders of Ready. This seeks referral to the Council Services and Safety Committee. Item D, AB 7070, project acceptance of Lower Lewis Creek Restoration Project. This seeks to accept the project as complete. And item E, AB 7074, surplus equipment regarding printers, computers, networks, and phones. This seeks approval for the surplus. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar for consideration under regular business? Seeing none, then, Council President Winterstein.
I'd like to move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to item seven, public hearing, Agenda Bill 7066, 2016 Revenue Sources. We'll begin the public hearing with a short presentation from our Director of Finance, Diane Markot.
Good evening, Your Honor and Council. We're in the process of developing the City of Issaquah's 2016 budget. The mayor presented his proposed budget to the council and the community in early October. Of, as required under state law, we're required to have a public hearing to discuss the upcoming revenue sources for the 2016, as well as a hearing on property taxes and any proposed changes in revenues. So tonight, I'll go through the overall changes that we're looking at in moving forward into next year. Overall, the revenues, we continue as in any budgeting. We tend to be conservative on our revenues, as well as planning for the future. So we, you know, with anything, a lot of what we're seeing as far as economic volatility is any future development. Right now, we're experiencing a very strong market of construction, new construction occurring in the community. In 2015, we've been seeing some very strong growth in our sales tax. As of October, our revenue is what, is equal to what we had collected in the entire year for 2014. So we're running approximately two months ahead of last year's collection of revenues. For 2016, the proposed general fund revenues is $41,372,200. That is an increase over the 2015 actual budget. So we're about $2.4 million higher. It is primarily related to construction activity. We've accounted for some of the potential for increases in sales tax due to construction, but we've also kind of are holding back a little bit, not knowing what the market conditions will continue to be. The sources of revenues, as you can see, the majority of the revenue in the general fund, because of the types of services that it provides, is supported by taxes, and that includes property taxes, business and occupation taxes, utility taxes, and sales tax. So the majority of our revenue comes from, and it's pretty much 30% property taxes, 30% sales taxes, and 30% BNO taxes, not exactly, but we have a nice distribution in that we're not reliant upon one primary revenue source as far as taxes is concerned. Then, a lot of our other revenue sources that we collect are primarily charges for services, whether that's our building activity, our jail. We have revenues that we collect in our jail, as well as our parks and recreation programs. And then, you can see the general fund type tax revenue for the taxes. You can see 20% utility, property tax, BNO, and sales tax. So, and then within our sales tax, we have quite a variety of collection, wholesaling, retailing, and in all categories in 2015, we've been seeing a nice increase in growth. It isn't predominantly one category. So like anything, you want to see all categories increasing and not relying on one particular category. In 2016, our sales tax, you can see where our estimate has peaked in 2015, as I just explained earlier, and then we have reduced that number based upon where we think the number should be trending. And then, as far as the property tax, we, the mayor's budget has a proposal to do our 1% increase in property tax. Our, the collection of property tax is nearly $7.9 million, and the 1% that is in the 2016 budget is $79,798. So a lot of people, there's a lot of confusion. People think that it's a 1% based upon the property tax increase. Our overall property tax increase from last year to this year as far as assessed valuation went up 7.6%, but under state law, we collect 1% of our authorized levy, so it is really based upon the dollars we collect and not the assessed valuation to property owners. So the, you know, a lot of people believe that it's, you know, it's 1% increase based upon the increase in the assessed valuation, but it's really the revenue that is the 1% limitation. In looking at our overall distribution of property taxes... In looking at our overall distribution of property taxes, I know, like for my own family, they believe that when they write a check for property taxes, all that money goes to the local jurisdiction or the local city. And you can see that the majority of the property taxes goes to support the Issaquah School District. And then the next largest proportion goes to the state-funded program, which they then in turn turned around and redistributed that money back to the school districts. And then the City of Issaquah is at, currently in 2015, we are at $1.27 per $1,000 assessed valuation. And then King County is at 1.34. And then you can see that we also included in property taxes is our King County flood zone, the Port of Seattle, emergency medical services for east side fire and rescue, as well as the library district. So we have multiple jurisdictions that share in the receipt of our property taxes. So as you can see, 63% of every property tax dollar goes in support of our schools. Looking at a bill of $5,620, that's currently on a $548,000, you can see how that money is distributed. So when you look at the City of Issaquah, for running our police department, our planning department, my department, finance, we receive $700 a year from a property that has an assessed valuation of $548,000. And again, you know, the majority of it goes in support of our schools, and some of it is voter-approved levy, and some of it is that which local governments have the authority to assess. So if you looked at using the 2015 tax levy, because the levy overall, once the council makes a decision, it then goes on to King County. King County looks at all of the various taxing districts and comes up with this total of $10.25 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. So again, if you remember, the City of Issaquah is about $1.25 of that entire $10.25. When you look at that dollar amount, for every $10.25, $5.72 represents the amount the elected officials in the state have the authority to levy. But what's really important is through various voter initiatives, the citizens of Issaquah have chosen to tax themselves for $4.52. So of the total levy, around 44% of it represents our citizens saying that whatever the initiative is, whether it's for parks, whether it's for schools, whether it's for transportation, their willingness to tax themselves in order to have the benefit of that particular activity. Looking at a comparison, again, our current levy is $1.05 for our regular levy. We're looking at an estimate of next year at $1.02 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. You can see that the overall change, earlier I said it was 7.6%, but a lot, that was on assessed valuation, but we had some new information since the slide was prepared, that our assessed valuation has been increasing. So I apologize, the 4% is now 7.6 based upon some information that we had prior to the submittal of this PowerPoint. Moving on to the enterprise fund revenue, before the council for consideration tonight is some proposed changes to our three utilities, water, sewer, and storm. The council, the services and safety has took under consideration a proposed rate increase for those three utilities. At this point in time, it has not been approved by council, but it will be for your consideration following this public hearing. As you can see, we have very strong revenues in our three utilities. Our water utility, we're estimating revenue of $8 million. Our sewer is 7.6 million. The majority of that money in the sewer utility is passed on to King County Metro. About 1.5 to 1.6 million of the 7.6 is really collected for the City of Issaquah, and the remainder is a pass-through for the services that King County Metro provides to the City of Issaquah. And then we have 4.468 million in our storm water. So overall, the only two proposals is our property tax proposal, and then the council's consideration for the three utilities. We're not recommending any other proposed rate increases in our other operations as part of the proposed 2016 budget. So that concludes it.
And that concludes the overview. And before I begin the public meeting, a reminder, when recognized, please come to the lectern and speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and your relationship to the city, and please limit your comments to five minutes. And with that, I'll open the public meeting at 8:36. Has anyone signed up to speak?
There are none.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience desiring to speak on the 2016 revenue sources this evening? Anyone desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone desiring to speak? Seeing no one then, the public meeting is closed at 8:37. And with that, I would open it up for council discussion. Council President Winterstein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on the agenda this evening is Agenda Bill 7066, and as was already outlined, we've concluded our public hearing. We've handled that part. And there's a motion this evening. Before I, and I'm going to make this motion as it's presented in the printed Agenda Bill, I just want everybody to think about that. This evening can be, this time right now, can be treated like a committee meeting. We can deliberate this. We have not had an opportunity to do this. We haven't taken the opportunity during the, any of our budget deliberations. And as we'll see in the end, there's, this is not the actual final vote on the amount. That'll come, that'll come later, and we'll see that in the, in the motion. But this opportunity to, you know, to discuss the motion and any information that's presented is available. So it might have the look and feel a little bit of a committee meeting, and that's not normally what happens during regular business meetings, but that opportunity does exist. So with that, I'm going to move to direct the administration to prepare the necessary documents, the ordinance and resolution, setting the amount of taxes to be collected in 2016, the amount to include a 1% base increase for adoption at the November 16, 2015 council meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to the motion or discussion?
I have a question. I have a question for Diane. Can you bring up your slides again?
Sure.
It was towards the end of your presentation. At, perfect. So where it says, "Property Tax Levy Rate," and you've got $1.05 rounding off 2015 actual, is that, this might be a compound question, is that the city share of the $10 per 1,000 assessed value?
Yes.
So with 2016 estimate going to 102, I'm just trying to get my non-mathematical head around the fact that it's an increase, but it results in a lower levy rate. Can you explain that?
It's a combination of a change in assessed valuation, as well as new construction sharing in that overall cost. So it is, it's the combination of the two. So as assessed valuation increases, the levy rate decreases. As we add new construction in, the levy rate decreases. So it's a combo of the two.
Okay. If there were not a 1% increase, that 102 would be even lower. Is that a correct statement or not?
Yes.
It is a correct statement. So it would drop the per household amount, that's the Issaquah share, below 102?
Yes. It may not go below 102, but you'd carry it out four or five decimal places.
And the overall 10, I was looking back at some notes from a few years ago, and it said that the assessed value back in 2010 was $10.83 rounding off, and now you're saying it's $10.25 per 1,000 assessed value. Yet, the assessed valuation change, I don't know, I can't speak for the numbers not on your chart, 11, 12, and 13, but it's gone up the last two years certainly, pretty significantly as we know from our notices. So do you know why the overall assessed value rate has actually dropped in the last five years?
The assessed valuation of property or the levy rate?
Levy rate has apparently gone from 10.85, 10.83 is what my notes from Agenda Bill 6184 from 2010 say, to 10.25 according to your presentation tonight.
So it's, that is not a straightforward answer, because what you need to then look at is, because we're not, we're not in isolation of that 10.25, we don't know any of these districts, they could, they could be changing. For the City of Issaquah, because of some of the refinancing I have done on voter-approved levy, on that side, the levy rate has actually dropped because we've done a refinancing, we have lowered our needs. So it is a combination based upon all of those districts and what they might be doing. The district could have paid off some of their debt, thereby lowering, lowering the levy rate also. So you can't look at it just, when you look at the $10, we have lots of partners that share in that.
Thank you very much.
Other questions or discussion?
I'm going to actually, I'm going to actually take control of the desktop. Is that one already open? Hold on. No, let's, let's close these. Sorry about that?
That's all right.
And I just need to...
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Oh, I have it open on my desktop.
I shouldn't have changed a lot of calculations.
So this, this topic of property taxes has kind of fascinated me here for a little while. So I put together some information for my own benefit, but I'm suspecting it may be of some use to all of us and to our residents as well. So I'm going to, I'm going to start with a quiz. I'm going to put some numbers up there. I realize if you don't, they're, they're kind of small, but does anybody know what those numbers may represent? Yeah, probably not. I'm going to tell you. What they do, they represent the year 2013, 14, and 15, and possible 2016 regular levy rate. The part that is actually the question in front of us that we're directing. Now, you'll notice that I have a slightly different number under 2016 plus 0% is what it says there. It says .984, 0.984. And Director of Finance, Markot, had provided me some updated information earlier, and I think it was as of October 16th. This information actually comes from the county. We don't calculate the rate. It actually comes upon the total assessed value, how much was collected in 2015, or the forecasted amount collected in 2015, and then that kind of sets the total amount and a maximum amount that we can collect next year. And based upon the forecast assessed value for next year, as that assessed value goes up, the actual rate per 1,000 goes down. And it's that inverse relationship, which is, which is a little bit odd. So I have columns out there both for if we don't increase it versus that we do increase this. So anybody have a guess of what these numbers might represent?
The value of a home?
Yeah, actually, it's a home of acquaintance of mine. Give that man a piece of candy corn. The assessed values of a home in years 2013, 14, 15, and 16, now this is a phenomenally fast rising value. The owners have made some investments, they've made some really nice improvements, but this is a real exceptional rise in rates. And I actually have three home profiles we're going to look at really quick. Now, we know that these, now if, if this, value of this home had not increased since 2013, those are the numbers, those were, for the regular rate, the rate that's in the question in front of us. The regular rate that they paid in 2013 is $397. If their house had not increased in value because the levy rate went down, in 2014, they would have paid 388, and then, then 340 last year. And then this year, they would be looking at paying either 318, or if we raise it by 1%, 321. But of course, the house of the value does actually go up. So that's just, this is what it would be. So if, if home values did not, in this case, a person's home value did not increase, their, the regular tax that they would pay to us would go down significantly because the rate changes. Now, the column shows is that what if, what if the rate didn't change, and they still had this 70% increase? Well, guess what? Their taxes would have increased by 70%. And there's these numbers in the column show you that they would have gone to 397, to 482, to 572, to 675. Of course, that didn't happen either because the rate went down. So, you know, what's really interesting, these are the actual numbers of the rates. So in 2014, they paid 470. Now that, that is a year in which they had a 21.4% increase in value. And then in 2015, they paid 489, and that's after an 18% increase. And then you can see for 2016, the number would be either 540 or 546, and that's following another 18% increase. So I kind of have these broken out as well. So though their home in 2014 increased in assessed value by 21%, that number on the far left, the actual amount they paid only increased by 18.4%. In 2015, even though their home increased by another 18%, they only paid in 2015 4% more than they did the year before, again, because the levy rate went down so significantly. And then for 2016, they're looking at paying either 540 or 546, and that's either a 10.4 or an 11.6% increase over the year before. And if you take the large numbers, even though their home value has grown by 70%, even if we increase the rate by the 1%, the full 101%, over this four-year period of time, the total amount they paid will have grown by 37.4%. And I think that's a key number right there. So the actual amount that they pay does not track with the actual valuation. And that, and I'm going to have, so I'm going to come back to that information, but this is, I think, an exceptional case, constituent of all of ours, where they have significant home values. Here's, or actually high grow, very good rate, growth. Now here's another probably below average home for Issaquah. In 2013, their assessed value is 292,000, and forecast for 2016, it's 396,000, for a total growth in assessed value of 35% since 2013. But if we raise the 1%, then their taxes over last year will go up 4.2% or $3.96 versus if we don't raise the 1%. Their taxes will still go up from 378 to 390. It's, the question is, are we going to raise it from 390 to 394? Do you see that in the numbers? versus if we don't raise the 1%. Their taxes will still go up from 378 to 390. It's, the question is, are we gonna raise it from 390 to 394? Do you see that in the numbers? So, interesting, so, so a lower-valued home who doesn't have quite the same rate of growth of assessed value, the rate of growth of their regular taxes that we collect is, is a much flatter curve. And then another sample of a very high-valued home. And this tells a very interesting story. Again, all the same tax rates, 1.71 million in valuation in 2013. In 2016, it's forecast to be 2,460,000 in value, which is a 19%, only a 19.6% increase in value over these four years. But if you look at the numbers in the, because we've had a decreasing assessed value, levy rate, this homeowner's actual paid-out taxes have been going down. Because the rate has been going down, and their, their home value hasn't been growing as a percent as fast as the others.
And, and these are not per year, right? These are per?
It's per year.
That's total price per year?
Yeah, so it fits right in with Diane's numbers. This is the regular levy rate of the question in front of the council. Right? So now, there's others that are attributed to city, that's the, that's the voter debt, okay? That's not included here.
I'm sorry, now that's why, that's why.
Not the voter debt, this is just the point that we have authority to select.
I was having trouble with order of magnitude. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, okay. So I think this, so it's a very interesting study between a fast-rising home, but almost an average. The city average is not far off from that. A lower-value home that's not growing as much, but you can see how their taxes have grown. And in a high-value home, whose actually assessed value isn't changing that much compared to the others, but due to the decreasing rate, their actual collected taxes is going down. So, and so I think that that, that's, that's pretty informative. This chart shows what the regular levy rate, again, the question in front of us this evening, what it has done historically since 2004. And the red, that's the blue line, and you can see it trended down. It rose slightly while home values were actually depressed because of the recession. And then it's been trending down again because assessed valuations are going up. That's that inverse relationship. And what the red squares represent is what the council has done each of those years. So in years 2004 through 2008, the council took the 101% or the 1% increase. And then years 2009 through 2014, the council did not take any percent increase. And you, and then, and then I have put on here the 1% for 2016. Obviously, we haven't chosen that yet, but I just put that marker on there. We did collect the 1% additional. So there is a relationship between historically of when the, there's been some growth in assessed value in new construction, historically, the Issaquah council has been taking the 1%. But when assessed values were going down, we actually did not. And so, and so, interesting information there. And now, and now this is, I'm sorry, this is an iChart, all of these are iCharts. This actually happens to be the, the history of, since 2000 of the home that I own. So this is my data, okay? And I, and I don't, I don't really want to go over all the detail, I wasn't, I don't intend to, but it's, it's interesting when you look over time, you know, that, back in 2007, at that, that value here of 634, this actually, you know, I'm looking even with a much, of paying, you know, less than that in here in 2016, even if we increase it 1%. So with this history of valuations going up, that we had a bad housing market, valuations went down, tax rates have been generally trending down. When you really think about the dollar amount out of people's pockets, I think it's very helpful to underst, if you look over a long period of time, because you get a truer sense of what it means to each household income. And then, so I just summarized all of this in a couple takeaways that I'd like to consider. Is that, first, it's very important that the collectible levy amount and the levy rate are calculations that are set by law. We actually don't, it's the county assessors who sets, who the, the total levy amount is defined. Diane receives that information, and she must adhere to it, right? And then the rate is, is either, we, you know, we have options. It can be 100% or 101%, or it could be somewhere in between. And so, but those are factors that are set by law. I think it's an interesting realization, at least to me, that property tax is a flat-rate tax. So as we saw, that regardless of the valuation of your home, you pay at the same rate. And that kind of jumps out to me. So when high-valued homes don't fluctuate in their value as much as a lower-valued home, the actual outlay of cash by the homeowners changes more for the lower-value homeowner. It's a flat-rate tax, so there's no variance based upon the actual value of the home. And then generally, what happens when there's across-the-board valuation increases, plus new construction, the levy rate goes down. So, so another way of saying that is when there is kind of a good, a, a, a market for, when, when, it's a seller's market, so to speak, and there's some construction going on, in other words, it's somewhat of a growth market, the actual rate they pay goes down. And that's, that's, that's due to the constructs of the law of the, of the amount, of, of how much we can collect, and it's either 100% or, or up to 101%. That's why that that happens. So as the economy, the assessed value and construction happens within a jurisdiction, the actual rate goes down. And then finally, you know, and this is kind of a repeat. Many homeowners will realize an, an increase because their assessed value increased. It should say an increase. So, and so, even though the rate is going down, as we saw in those examples, that with such a great increase in assessed value, rate's going down, but your assessed value is going up, you're still gonna see an increase. So in many of those cases, it was either, it was either gonna be a, you know, in, in this chart, it's either gonna be, you know, $5.49 more, or $3.96 more, or maybe $20.46, depending on the value of your home. So, so I, I just wanted to share, you know, this information because it's part of what I considered as I evaluated the question in front of us, which is the regular levy rate. And I also wanted to share it with, with everyone else so that there may be more viewers of this, this evening than when we have our, our next budget deliberation meeting and when we review this again on the 16th.
So I've probably gone through this exercise 14 years on the council now, and two years as mayor in '16. And that is the best explanation that I have ever heard explaining the, everything you've wanted to know about regular levy rates. So Paul, thank you very, very much for that tutorial. Additional questions or discussion? Josh?
I'm gonna make sure everyone else had a chance first to ask some questions.
Go.
I have some comments. So I, I wanna echo, first of all, your comment, because I was about to say the same thing. Paul, that was really outstanding and commendable, and you might have even changed my decision-making this evening. You know, the, a few things stand out to me. One, it's, it's sort of interesting that the more expensive homes are not perhaps bearing as significant of a burden on the increase in the levy rate, simply because their assessed valuation is not changing as significantly. And so I guess it's good, if you can afford that kind of house, then you perhaps bear the benefits of, of that value and a stable value in that. In terms of the bill itself, this is what I was looking at when I came in here before hearing the presentation. I've only voted for one property tax increase in seven prior decisions on this, and that was in 2013. Last year, I was the only person who voted no. In all the previous years, at least that I had notes on that I could find, the council as a whole voted to do nothing in terms of an increase, it was 0%. And in some of those years, in fact, the budget reflected a 0% increase, the proposed budget. This year's budget does not. And so, some of the things that concerned me going into this decision-making process was, one, that this entire process right now seems very presumptive. The increase is already presumed in our fiscal year 2016 budget. And so in order for us to not take the property tax increase action that's suggested, we would have to do something and find the dollars in the budget in order to balance it out. And I, I think that's a little presumptive to have that in there. Number two, the bill itself that's before us, I also think is presumptive, because as you read through it, it says that the recommendation and, in fact, the, the motion, if I recall, which matched the one in the bill, was to direct the preparation of necessary documents, ordinance and resolution, to include a 1% base increase for adoption. Well, if you look at the attachments to the motion, they've already been prepared. There they are. There's the ordinance that says, whereas the council has given notice of the public hearing held November 2nd, and the council, after hearing and duly considering the evidence, has determined there is a need to increase the property tax revenues. And the resolution also suggests that we've already done these things. So, this vote that we're about to take is, in my opinion, a fait accompli because the ordinance and resolution have already been prepared, and they've already told us what it is we're gonna do. And, and to me, that's really a little bit of the cart before the horse, before this council has taken action on the question. It may be very good predictive ability, but I don't think that's what the bill contemplated. It contemplated us authorizing the preparation of an ordinance. And keep in mind that this doesn't have to be a binary outcome. It's not 0% or 1%. Those are not the only two choices. There is any number between 0 and 1% that could be selected. And in the past, it's always been binary, but it doesn't mean that it always has to be that way. So, this, this essentially suggests that this is the way we're going to do it, and it already assumes the outcome of the vote before we've even had it. The other issue I have is in looking at the resolution itself, it says in the resolution that we've determined that there is a substantial need, we've already determined in the future perhaps, that there is a substantial need due to increases in the cost of providing city services justify a 1% increase of the 2016 levy for the property tax to be collected. Now, I, I don't know what that substantial need is. And I went back to the one time I voted yes on the property tax increase, and I couldn't find that same language in the wording of the ordinance in that year. So I don't know this year what that substantial need is. Those dollars are not set aside for any particular funding in the budget. They just go into the pool, and the dollars are already presumed in there. So it's not like by approving the 1% increase, we're saying that we're gonna put 75,000 or 80,000 more dollars into the overlay program, or 75,000 or 80 more dollars into human services. It's just in there, it's already part of the package deal. So, I, I kind of disagree with the resolution in the sense that I don't know what the substantial need of the cost of providing city services is. Is the cost of providing city services really gone up to the point where we need that $79,798? That, that's just kind of odd, and I, it says we're making that determination, and I don't know what it is. You know, it's, two weeks ago, I talked about Best Starts for Kids being taxation with somewhat of a plan. This is sort of taxation for the sake of taxation. And that bothers me just as a property taxpayer, as we all are, as a property owner. That's where I came into this this evening, is just being troubled by the language of the resolution, the ordinance of what we're being asked to do. At the same time, I recognize and appreciate what we've just seen. And it also makes good sense to me in terms of, this isn't just check the box, everybody pays more, it's more money coming out of your pocket, because that's not necessarily the case. And so I really appreciate that. So, at this point, for tonight's purposes, I'm gonna go along with the preparation of the resolution that's already been prepared. And then I guess we'll take up the issue of the actual increase at the next meeting in a couple of weeks. So, I'll, I'll support the motion because I think it's already, it's already been decided by the language that's before us.
Councilmember Marx?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. A couple things, you know, I always, and this isn't, this is just speaking philosophically, this is in response to any comments that I've heard this evening. Separation between revenue and expense. I've always, I've always been skeptical of the idea that somehow if we come up with a funding mechanism, expenditures will increase to fill any, any alleged potential vacuum. If you look at the total tax load for, and I think I've said this in this, in this body before, if you look at municipal, county, and state tax loads, they don't vary very, they don't vary much nationally. And particularly, if you look at the northern states, they're all between 12 and 13% total. So the services to provide that, that most Americans consider important, and in the northern states, there's pretty much agreement on what those services should be, are all pretty much the same. So the expense side is, is pretty consistent across the states. What varies is how that revenue is generated, right? We have, by most measures, the least progressive tax structure west of the Mississippi. We, because we rely on sales tax, and because sales tax hits, you know, if you make $50,000 a year, you spend a lot more of that $50,000 on the services and products that you need than if you spend a million dollars. So, we are not as progressive as some other states. One of the few tools that we have that is generally perceived as, as quite progressive is the property tax. And so, if you think we're gonna need a certain amount of revenue over the next N number of years, and I think this body has already taken a look at the long-term trends of, of how the city is spending money, and we've said that per capita in real dollars, we've, we've actually been flat or declining in, in most of our major departments, which, which tells me that we are practicing good fiscal austerity. Maybe that's not the right word, restraint, thank you, thank you very much, much better than austerity. So, you know, if, if we've shown that we're keeping expenditures in line, then the question becomes how best to generate revenues? And I think by and large, you know, you hate to say, oh yeah, I'll always take a certain amount, and I understand councilmember shares cringing at making automatic assumptions of, of increasing revenues, but because we have so few, so few progressive tax levers, I generally tend to like this one. So, showing that the city is, is being careful stewards of the money, then I, then I look at this and I say, this is a good, have this lever be a little bit larger, and over time, so that some of the other levers will get a little bit smaller. So, that's my thoughts. Thank you for indulging me.
Any other questions or comments? Council President Winters time.
Thank you, and I wanna address a couple of Josh's comments. So we will have at least two budget deliberation meetings before we actually vote on, on the, on this matter. This, as you properly pointed out, this is, you know, prepare these documents. So, it's my assumption that until we vote on final language on November 16th, this council still has the opportunity to adjust language. And I, I don't take the language that's in this bill, Josh, as being necessarily the final language if we want to discuss it during deliberations. We have that opportunity.
Other questions or discussions before you act? And all those in favor of directing the administration to prepare the necessary documents per an ordinance and resolution setting the amount of taxes to be collected in 2016 amount to include a 1% base increase for adoption at the November 16, 2015 council meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, Agenda Bill 7064, utility rate adjustments. This is coming back from the Services and Safety Committee, and we'll kick off the discussion from our Finance Director, Diane Markot.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't come often, but I come with a lot at council meetings. So, we, we've been working on a rate revenue study for approximately the last year in looking at our three utilities, the water utility, sewer, and storm. Several years ago, the council adopted some policies that spoke to our water, to our utility operations. One of the ones, I wanna call your attention to a couple of them. The first one is city-owned utilities will show positive net operating results. Utilities will also be responsible for the cost of operations. So when we began our rate study, in two out of our three utilities over the last several years, we have had net operating losses. In the water utility, last year, we had an operating loss of 1.4 million. What that really is saying is, in many cases, we did not cover the cost of depreciation. Depreciation is then used to continue to... continue to make repairs and improvements to our existing system. So that was one of our policies that, in doing the rate study, we wanted to bring a course of correction action to that. Another one was utility rates studies shall be conducted at least once every five years. In looking at our current rates, our water rates, the last time they were increased, were four years ago. Our sewer utility rates were increased seven years ago, and our storm water rate increase was 13 years ago. So we have had a long history of not increasing our utility rates, and that has caught up with us by the fact that we're starting to have operating losses in our utilities. And then, once we get on to our routine, what we'll be doing is, in those intervening years, we'll be looking at the rates at least biannally to look at them, how their, how our income is doing as compared to our expenses. So when we, the proposal before you tonight has been before Services and Safety, and each of the two, three utilities has two components to the proposal. One is a change in the actual rate revenue that is part of the bi-monthly bill for our water, sewer, and storm. And then there's also a proposal for a change in what we call our general facility charge. General facility charge is that, that is which, that is charged to new development. So what they're doing is, basically, they're buying into the existing system, and they're also having to pay for increase in capacity needs as a result of the development. So each water, sewer, and storm has a proposal for rates and GFCs. Now, one of the things that's really interesting that our consultant, and I'll turn this over to him, but when we look at the average residential customer, the overall impact and the changes in these three utilities, understanding we haven't changed storm water in 13 years, is about $3.50 a month. So their bill, because we bill every two months, will go up around $7.50 to $8.00 a month, depending on the amount of consumption. So we took the average residential consumption. Now, others will go up more if they're using more water, sewers, or have a larger parcel. So it, it varies. But when we took the typical residential customer and looked at the overall impact, it was a 3.6% that translates into about $7.50 a month. So with that, I would like to turn the overall presentation over to Sean Corn. He is with HD Engineering and has been working with us. Sheldon is also here because he, a lot of this work is capital-related, so he is also here to assist in answering any specific questions on capital projects. This was a real team effort. Brett Heath was also heavily involved in operations, but was unable to make it tonight. So this was really a collaborative effort amongst several departments, as well as working with Sean. So with that, I'll introduce Sean. What we have done with Services and Safety, we had 50 slides to give them the full appreciation of what the study involves. We have done a condensed version for you. Hopefully, that will give you enough of a flavor of what we're proposing. So I'll turn it over to Sean.
Thank you, Diane. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for having me here tonight. As Diane said, we'll be talking about the water, sewer, and storm water utilities, and the purpose of the study was to make sure that there was sufficient revenues from rates to fund the operating and capital needs of each utility. And that's the important piece, is that these are enterprise funds that are funded strictly through those rates charged to your customers and your citizens. And as a result of that study, for each utility, we came back to rate transition plans to fund that operating and capital need. And then the other piece of this was to look at the actual rate structure, how you charge your customers for that service, and were there other ways that may make more sense to the city for that. And then the final piece, the second aspect that Diane talked about, was the GFCs, that new charge to new customer, or the charge to new customers connecting to the system. So I'll start off with the water, sewer, and storm water utility analysis, and we did a two-step process. We reviewed the revenues of each utility and compared those to the expenses of each utility. And again, this is in a silo, the water utility, the wastewater utility, the storm water utility, and we take a look at those revenues and project those out based on the growth on the system, or the new customers connecting to the system. We did a similar approach with the expenditures on the O&M side. So we projected out the O&M expenses based on historical inflationary factors to look out over a long-term time period. And then for the capital plan, we looked at how that would be funded. We know we needed X amount of dollars in each year to improve, replace, maintain the system. How would that be funded? Would that be funded through existing reserves, through GFCs, through rates? What was that funding plan? And we developed a funding analysis for the next five years for operating capital needs. Once we knew the overall revenue needs, then we could design rates around those overall needs, and we took a look at the rate structures as part of that, as I talked about. So I'm going to cut right to the chase here, and we'll talk about the summary of the rate studies, and rate adjustments are necessary for each utility. It's primarily driven by needing to provide prudent funding for future renewal and replacement over this next five-year period. And so when Diane talked about net loss, where we're not funding annual depreciation expense, that's one of the benchmarks that we look at when we review utility rates, is how much of funding is available for capital. And we try and tie that to annual depreciation expense. That way, from an accounting perspective, as the system's losing its value, you're at least putting that back into the system. So I liken it to changing the oil in our car, putting new tires on it. There's all these things that we should be doing, and we don't have to do those, but that car's going to have to be replaced really quickly. And yes.
I'll ask you a question. So you have renewal and replacements. Everything you just described sounded like, you know, maintenance. Is, is there a distinction between renewal and replacements?
So in my, when we talk about utility infrastructure, we're talking about all the pipes, the pumps, those types of things. Those are the renewals and replacements. They're only going to last 10 years, 20 years, 50 years, depending on what that infrastructure is.
The meaning of the word renewal. I mean, is there some special meaning on this?
That's just an industry term of renewal and replacement, to maintain and replace the system in place.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So that was the key thing that we looked at, was what needed to be funded in each year, and we tie that back to that annual depreciation expense to make sure that we're prudently funding that. The other piece is making sure that we're maintaining an ability to fund annual O&M expenditures, and then also maintain key financial metrics. Make sure that we're maintaining adequate fund balances or reserve levels. And we took a look at what those minimums were, making sure that we can maintain adequate debt service coverage ratios. We're not planning on issuing any new long-term debt for any of the utilities, but if you had a, an issue arise where you had a major expense, we want to make sure that you're in the financial position to be able to borrow for that, should you need to do that. When we took a look at the overall rate structures, your current rate structures are contemporary, and we're meeting staff's goals and objectives. We recommend maintaining the current rate structures for water and storm water. So when we talk about a rate adjustment, we're simply increasing both components of the rates, and we'll talk about that a little more. First, we also added a new rate structure for large water users. That's a new category. It's, should you have a customer come that would use a lot, or a significant amount of water for certain purposes, then that would be a rate structure for them. And the only change we're projecting for the rate structures is on the sewer rate. There's two pieces to it. There's a fixed charge and a volume charge based on your winter water use. We're talking, proposing of putting the full increase in sewer in that customer fixed charge. Right now, it's a very small amount, and when you think of how the utilities incur costs, they are primarily fixed. They're very minimal, variable costs on the sewer utility. And so that's one of the proposed changes that we have from this. So here's the recommended rate transition plans. For the water utility, for 2016, it'd be a proposed 6%, followed by 3, 5.5% in 2017 through 19, and a 3.5% in 2020. For sewer, it's 6% for two years, followed by 3, 5.5%, and on storm water, you can see it's 5%, 4%, followed by 2, 3.5%, and 3% over that five-year time period. As Diane mentioned, that's roughly a $7.00 increase for your average customer, your typical customer, every bi-monthly billing period, so for every two-month period.
In the first year.
Pardon?
First year.
Correct. Per year, for the first year, yes. That is correct. What we have here is the first-year adjustment, and the first column on the far side is the present and proposed. For 6 CCF, 6 CCF is 600 cubic feet. A cubic, 100 cubic feet is your billing unit, and each cubic foot, or 100 cubic feet, is 748 gallons. So that's how you bill your customers. So your typical customer, in the wintertime and in the summertime, is somewhere between the 6 and 12 columns here. When you look at a lot of your customers, they are in the 8 to 10 range, and then you have, in the winter, you're a little lower, in the summer, you're a little higher. Again, there are outliers, folks with larger yards that will be using more water in the summertime. What you can see is a stacking of each of the utilities. The first piece of the stack, the reddish color, that is the King County Metro Charge. So that's the piece that is directly passed through from King County. The next bar, the grayish color, is the sewer rate, and that for a 6 CCF customer, that would be $16.48 presently, increasing to $19.08 in the proposed scenario. Then we have the storm in the orange, and then we have the water in the blue above that. And so you can see, for your average customer, between 6 and 12, their bill goes up roughly $7.00 bi-monthly for that first year. And exactly as you mentioned, then depending on those proposed rate adjustments in the out years, it would go up roughly similar to that in the next couple of years each year. So what this looks like on a individual utility basis, this is the water utility. So this is their bi-monthly bill, and the first piece is the city's present and proposed. Then we've got the Smash Plateau Water and Sewer District, City of Redmond, City of Bellevue, City of Kirkland, City of Renton rates. And what you'll see is the different use, again, at 6, 12, and 24 billing units, bi-monthly here. And you can see that the blue bar, the first bar on the left, that is the low-use customer. The grayish bar in the middle is your medium-use customer, and then the reddish bar is your high-use customer. And so you can see, they're all fairly comparable, and the numbers are down here below. Your higher use is a little higher than the other customers. That's primarily based on the design of the rate structure, not necessarily the level of your rates. You have a conservation-oriented rate structure, so the more you use, the more you're going to pay. That is some of what's driving that higher bill for those larger customers. On the sewer side, it's very similar. Again, the city's rates on the left-hand side, present and proposed, for 6, 12, and 24. The caveat to the sewer side is that you'll see the blocks for the City of Renton, or the City of Redmond, as an example. They charge a flat fixed charge for their sewer customers. It does not vary based on the customer's winter water use or total water use. And so that's one method that varies on the sewer side. Billing on a volume metric is very common in the sewer industry, and it's actually, a lot of folks feel that it provides more equity in the rate structure because you're billing on winter water use, which is presumed to be sewer use going down the drain for those customers that use more. Again, overall, right about the average of some of the comparable cities here. Storm water, again, on the left is the city, and you'll see that it can vary depending on the stormwater level, but again, it's kind of right in the middle, average with some of the other cities in the area. There are folks, I should say, water, sewer, and storm, other utilities in the area that are going through a similar process, or have just gone through a similar process and have rate transition plans in place, or are talking about adopting rates moving forward as, as well. So this is kind of a moving target, depending on when folks have done their last study. So one of the questions that came out of the committee meeting was how this impacted overall reserves, and so we wanted to provide a few charts on this. The blue component is the operating cash reserve fund. The red is the capital fund. The dashed line right there, that's the minimum target. When Diane was talking about some of your financial policies, the level, your bottom level that you want to be at. So you can see for the water utility, that we're stayed just above that minimum fund balance, so that's staying right where it should be. The capital fund is doing what it's supposed to be doing. As we have some major projects come on, that fund balance declines, then it can start to build back up, and then it starts to decline again over time. So that's the ebb and flow of the capital plan over time. And that capital fund is funded through a combination of rates or available cash on hand, as well as the GFCs, or the funds that come in when new customers connect to the system. As a benchmark, we also look at annual depreciation expense. You can see it's, for the water utility, 2013 annual depreciation was approximately 1.6 million. That's sometimes another benchmark for the minimum we want to hold in our capital reserve funds, to make sure that if we have any issues going forward, something goes bump in the middle of the night, we have some cash on hand from a capital perspective to fund those improvements. On the sewer side, very similar. You can see we're meeting our operating minimum target throughout the time period. Our capital reserves come down a little bit, but those actually stay relatively flat. But we do have several projects planned just outside this five-year window that will be using a good chunk of the reserves going out into time. So that's one reason this one only drops a little bit over time. The out years have some more significant projects. On the storm water reserve, we start fairly low. We start our operating cash just slightly above our overall target, minimal capital reserves, and you can see that grows over time. This chunk here, the capital reserve, that's just about, just over a million dollars in total. I know it looks large on the scale here for that, but that is about a million dollars. And again, that grows over time as a combination of GFCs coming in the door, and then used as capital projects come in, in those out years. So that was the utility rate analysis. The utility GFC analysis, or general facility charge, the key component here is to bring equity between existing customers and new customers coming on to the system. Because when you think about it, as you go out and you have new customers connect, you have to build bigger facilities. You have to extend services possibly. And so as part of that, we want to make sure that those customers pay their fair share of the costs associated with providing them service. So these customers will pay a buy-in to the existing system, so the facilities that have been in place over time to meet their needs, plus any additional infrastructure that's needed to meet their service needs. So if we need a new pump station on the water side, or a new lift station on the sewer side, those costs are rolled into this analysis to make sure that they're paying their share of the system. It's a one-time fee, so when a new developer, development comes in, the developer, that fee is levied to them as part of that. And it's based on current assets brought to today's dollars, plus those future improvements that we need. So just as a comparison here, and for GFCs, this is more of a simple comparison. You cannot simply look at what Redmond, or Kirkland, or the Plateau is charging and say, we want to charge that. This is driven by code, state, Washington code, and so we have to have a maximum fee that we can charge, and that's what we have calculated here as part of this. But you can see the current fee is about $4,000 for water. That can increase up to a maximum of $6,029 based on existing facilities and new, new facilities needed. Comparison to the Plateau, Kirkland, Renton, it's slightly higher. I will say the Plateau has other local facility charges that are added on to their GFC that, that build those up a little bit. And Bellevue looks really odd, $29, but that is charged over 10 years per month, so it actually equals about $3,500 for their fee. On the sewer side, a little bit different. We're at $2,039. The proposed fee would come up with this $2,024. And you can see, compared to everybody else, that's a little bit lower in this case. And again, Bellevue charges about $1,600 over a 10-year period for customers. And then storm water, again, current fee is $789, proposed fee is $1,256, the maximum ceiling fee for the general facility charge. You can see, compared to the other utilities, is fairly similar. Bellevue, again, $666 over that 10-year timeframe. So with that summary of this, rate adjustments are necessary to adequately fund the utilities over the next five-year period. The rate transition plans have been developed for each utility to fund the specific operating and capital needs of each of those utilities. We're proposing that the current rate structures be maintained, and only the level of the We're proposing that the current rate structures be maintained and only the level of the rates be adjusted. So if we increase the water rates, it's both the fixed charge and the consumption charge. The exception is the sewer rate, how I spoke earlier about only increasing the fixed component. And then you can adjust your GFCs to maintain equity between new and existing customers moving forward. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor and council for any questions.
Are there questions? Also, member Milligan.
I just have a question from the material in the packets.
Yes.
Something I didn't understand. On page 38 of 67, there's the water rates charts that has single-family resident, duplex, apartment townhouses, all that sort of thing. And I, on the fixed charge, and then there's the meter size, the single-family residential, it has a rate, and then it has the different blocks of use as they go out. And then duplex has a rate, and the duplex rate is significantly higher. And I maybe don't know what it is we're talking about there. Can you explain that for me?
So here is the single family, the residential. So there's a fixed charge that varies by meter size. And then there's the five blocks or tiers of consumption. And then on the next slide here, page 22, is the duplex, where you have the fixed charge and then the tier sizes as well. So the difference between that fixed charge, I'll show here, the 3136 for three-quarter versus 2556, as an example, comes back to how the prior cost of service allocated costs between the various customer categories. So there's a customer component that's included in this, as well as other costs that are allocated to each class of service. And so we've maintained those current relationships. We didn't look at the cost of service this time. But that's fairly typical, that you'll have a different fixed charge by customer class based on fire protection needs, customer requirements, and other allocated costs to the various customer classes of service.
So if I understand correctly...
Yep.
The cost is higher for dup, for per unit in a duplex than it is in a single-family home?
On the fixed charge component, yes.
And then the, and then their block rates are higher?
Do.
Whoops, wrong way. Correct, yes. And that's typically based on that cost of service analysis.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? I would look to the chair of services and, or safety and services, services and safety.
We'll answer to either. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number...
Two, seven, four, seven.
Two, seven, four, seven. Amending section 13 dot 24 dot 110, paragraph C of the Isaguá Municipal Code relating to water rates and establishing January 1st, 2016, is the effective date amending section 13 dot 24 dot 090, paren B, general facility charge. Also adopt ordinance number...
Two, seven, four, eight.
Two, seven, four, eight. Amending section 13 dot 70 dot 040 of the Isaguá Municipal Code relating to sewer rates and charges and establishing January 1st, 2016, is the effective date. And amending sections 13 dot 70 dot 020, paren A, general facility charge and establishing January 1st, 2016, as the effective date. And adopt ordinance number...
Two, seven, four, nine.
Two, seven, four, nine. Amending section 13 dot 30 dot 050, para C of the Isaguá Municipal Code relating to stormwater rates and establishing January 1st, 2016, as the effective date. And amending section 13 dot 30 dot 055, paren A, general facilities charge and establishing January 1st, 2016, as the effective date.
Second.
Moved and seconded discussion.
I'll start by mentioning a couple of things. One is that our committee did move this forward on a two-to-o vote. It was not unanimous. I'll also mention that there was a conversation about wanting to get ahead of this in the future and wanting to see, as the city continues to develop fiscal policies, looking at cost adjustments for inflation going forward so that we don't have to have one-time kicks like this. There was some, there was some talk, this is obviously, you don't want to get behind the eight ball like this and have to look at some large individual charges. And that seems like a route forward to not get in this situation yet again in five years.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Milligan.
Want to get ahead, anybody? No? Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Tola, and your committee for reviewing this. This was really complicated material when it came through in a preview and referred it to your committee. And then I really appreciate the extra material that you brought and provided in the packet. And I feel like a lot of my questions were satisfied and really grateful. And in following it just a little bit as a Cascade Water customer and also serving as an alternate with Mayor Butler on the committee, rates go up. And if we don't increase, rates go up from our providers, say Cascade Water Alliance. And if we don't increase our rates to our ratepayers, then we get stuck with a deficit. And so I'm really glad that you looked at that. I do have just two little things that don't jeopardize the vote on this, but might warrant a second look, and that is, I appreciate the answer to my question, but it still doesn't satisfy my curiosity about why those were different. And maybe there's something, if it's always been that way, maybe there's something that could be looked at again to be a little more satisfying than, well, that's how we do it. And then the other one was, as a new homebuyer 10 years ago in Isaguá, the King County GFC at $10,000 is not included. And I tell you, it's a rude awakening when you move into your new home and you thought you were paying, you know, $290,000 for it, and you find out, no, it's $300,000 because you didn't take into account this King County rate. I don't know what to do, but if this body can help make a more transparent process for that utility, shoot, that would be great. Because we're expecting growth. There are other people who may, may get hit with this. And there's one more thing I was going to say. I didn't write it down. There I go. If you don't write it down, you can't remember what it was.
Well, if it comes to you a little later, raise your hand.
Mostly, thank you. And thanks for doing the hard work on evaluating all this.
Thanks. So the committee recommendation was unanimous. It was two to zero. I didn't take a position. And that's because we considered this at the end of a five-and-a-half-hour committee meeting at almost 11 o'clock at night, which was essentially, for me, the end of a 15-hour workday. And I was lucky to even be able to form words coming out of my mouth at that point of the evening, let alone digest 50 slides. Diane was not kidding you. It was 50 slides of this very sort of information at, you know, 11 o'clock at night, almost 11:00. And I just simply did not feel that I could adequately make a recommendation to this body at that time and took the unusual step of simply abstaining. But now I've had a chance to think about it. And here's my problem, as I often have one. I think that funding infrastructure is critically important. Absolutely. It's, in fact, a fundamental problem in this country, that our infrastructure is degrading at a rate that municipalities, counties, states, our federal government cannot keep up with. And someday, we are all going to be paying the piper for that. And we have seen situations where pipes will burst under streets and things will fall apart. And it's just, we need the capital improvements, absolutely. My concern is, it's still an issue of, I know it's not taxation, Diane corrected me at the committee meeting, it's a rate increase, it's not a tax increase. But whatever you want to call it, as I said at the committee meeting, it's taken money out of people's pockets. And it's putting it to a good cause. The issue for me is the significance and the amount of the pain that we're asking our community members to pay over the next five years. And, you know, everyone's paying more for phone bills, for cable bills, for property tax, maybe next year for sound transit, maybe a huge local transportation package that might come forward next year. And all those dollar bills add up. You can say it's $2 more a month for this plan and $3 more a month for that plan. But when you add it in the aggregate, you're paying a lot more money today than you were yesterday. Maybe not on the property tax levy, apparently. You know, you can break down $100 a year, and you can break it down by day, the hour, the minute, and it sure doesn't sound like a lot. You know, pay $0.05 a minute, pay $0.05 an hour, that's, hey, I can afford a nickel. But when you add it up, $100 a year sounds like a lot. You know, that could be holiday shopping. It could be groceries. It could be a few dinners at a local family-owned restaurant that you're not spending on our economy, but you're paying towards rates. 6% for water in one year, in my opinion, is a little much. When you add that to 5.5 in 2017, another 5.5 in 2018, another 5.5 in 2019, and 3.5 more in 2020, all of those increases add up. If you take those percentages, I started with $150 every two months as a baseline. If you add 6% to that, you get to $159. If you add 5.5% to that number, you get to 167. Then in 2018, 176. In 2019, 186, rounding off. And in 2020, 192. That means using just those increases, and that's only the proposed water rate increases, in five years, an individual would be paying around more than $252 more per year than that individual is today. If you take into account the sewer and stormwater rate increases, I would venture it's close to more than $300 per year than current rates. $300 per year come 2020, more than what you are paying now. Members of the public, get ready to open the checkbook, open the wallet, open the purse, $300 more per year, and think of what else you're spending that money on nowadays. That's the level of pain that we're talking about in a five-year period of time. I guess no one seems to mind, because we didn't have any audience comments on that this evening, but I'm troubled by it. Here's, here's the upshot, here's the rub. When I look at the water ordinance that's proposed, I actually don't see the increases beyond 2016 in this ordinance. The whereas section says that the council recognizes the need to increase rates by 6% in 2016, 5.5 in 17, 18, 19, 3.5 in 2020. When you actually go to the ordinance that's before us, section one says that 1324-110C is amended to read as follows, and it contains a section on rates. And it says, these water rates will become effective the first full billing cycle after January 1, 2016. And it has a box for single-family residential based on meter size, a box for duplex, a box for apartments and commercial, arcs irrigation, private irrigation. And then it has large user, which is a new rate class. That is the only place in the proposed ordinance that actually includes fiscal years beyond 2016. 1324-090B increases the general facility charge, but again, that also doesn't have any years beyond 2016. The other two proposed ordinances, the ones for sewer and stormwater, they do mention the, the rate increases. And in committee, I brought up that I was very concerned about signing us up for five years of rate increases. I would, I would prefer to have us only look at it maybe for a two-year period of time and then reassess the health of the funds. And I think signing us up for five years, even with checks every so often, is a little bit much to swallow at this point in time. But then when I looked at the water ordinance, it doesn't actually do that. If this is adopted as presented, it only increases water rates in year 2016. It would require further legislative action to change the rates in 2017 and beyond, except in the category of large user, which is a four-inch meter. So I don't know if that's what was intended here. I probably could have said nothing, and perhaps people would have been asked to pay a lot more in 2017 despite an ordinance that wouldn't say so. I don't think that would have been responsible of me to withhold that observation this evening. But I just want to point out that if this passes, the sewer and stormwater rates are signed up for a five-year increase, the water rate by code would only apply to 2016. That's what I'm reading here in the proposed language.
In reviewing this, I believe councilmember Shearer is correct. Couple of options is, we could look at the other ordinances, we could come back with an amended ordinance. It's whatever the council's pleasure is. You know, we apologize, this stuff is very complex. And so it was just an oversight in all of the various individuals that were reviewing
So it's not all three, I just wanted to point that out. The sewer and the stormwater are correct, but it looks like the water was the one that got missed and should have reflected the five. So that's unfortunate.
So is it, can we amend and still take action? Is there, or do we have to?
So... Just direction to correct it and reflect the five years as per reflected in the... So I think in talking to the clerk, what they could do is, we've got the direction that's reflected in the legislative intent in the whereas ordinances, and we could go ahead and, as directed, reflect the rates that would reflect that as directed in the, in the whereas ordinance for that, for that.
Hey, Bob?
Because the table should be in there.
Could you say that one more time for me, please?
So the, if council adopted those ordinances, I think what was missing was simply the table, but the direction of the increases reflected in the whereas clause of the resolution. And so I think, you know, with the direction provided that we would incorporate those tables into the appropriate code based on those resolutions, yeah, based on that direction provided, I think we would accomplish what was intended. The other two are fine.
So the resolution is really the stated intent of the council? And if there needs to be corrections in the other material to properly reflect the resolution, that would be proper, that would be allowed without further council action?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Something to think about? And Josh, I have to ask you a question, too. You started with $150 with your analysis. That's, so that's the, that's, I'm not really sure where that came from. If I look at the six CCF, and I think we heard this evening that a lot of users are between six and 12, eight to 10. So if I just start at the six and just work on numbers there, I think that, you know, what you get is, because at those rate increases for across all three utilities, by the fit by 2020, the average bill would be an additional $23 more. So that's at the six level. So I might want to check your math. So...
So the 150, I believe, is what I budget personally every two months for my utility.
King County Metro sewer included?
Probably.
Which is the big portion of that. That's actually in the bill. You can see that in the agenda bill on page 54, where we have that breakout. So my numbers were based upon the present rates for six CCF, 4002 for water, 2816 for storm, and 1648 for sewer from the city. The balance I did not compute at all was 8406, which is from Metro. And we're not, that's not the question in front of us. So using those bases, then by the year 2020 for the six CCF, it would be $22.50 in total more than it is today every two months.
Just for water?
Sewer and, no, all of them.
Mine. And that's based on spending how much per month?
That's the six CCF. That's, that's the low end. So the information that was provided, so just adding up those percentages. So again, so by 2020, every, you know, someone in that category, these increases represent an increase over today of $22.57 in total.
Yeah, I mean, if you take the low end, I mean, it depends how much you use, right? I mean, the amount, obviously, you pay is going to depend on, on how much you use. And the increase correspondingly...
So I just wanted to point out that a basis of $150, your numbers were related to that. I was basing mine on actual rates for that are, you know, in the part of the packet that we received.
Okay, councilmember Marts.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Fees are generally, should be the easiest of things for us to decide on because they're a direct, you know, if you don't want to, if you don't like the cost of your water, don't use water. It's, you know, it's, you pay for what you get. It's not one, it's not one area of the city paying for another area of the city. The only question's... The only questions really come up, how do you prorate it within the actual bill that's due? And then how do you, you know, the time dependency of those charges? And we have already talked a little bit about how we get out from behind the eight ball going forward with this. And as to the sort of prorating, how you divvy it up, putting it more heavily on the large-scale users, I think the city has done a good job in explaining why it's, it would like the mechanism that it would. So for me, this is a pretty easy one to support. You know, I, I wish, I, I wish we had been doing a cost increase every year. I wish we hadn't been having to look at these, but, you know, a couple of years ago, we looked at DSD rates, right? And we had huge percentage increases. And we, and we talked about, you know, we don't want to see fifty percent increases year over year. This is five or six percent year over year. It's unfortunate, I wish we didn't have to be there, but it doesn't really rise to the level of the sort of thing where we have to say, whoa, even though it, I mean, when it was fifty percent year over, even though it was a direct pass-through, even though it was, it was fees as opposed to a tax, we, we had, we had some heartburn around it. But at five or six percent, it's, it's an unfortunate, it's not a, it's not a reason not to charge people for their services, for the services they receive. Thank you.
I believe our, our city attorney, Jim Haney, can address an amendment that would clearly specify the intent of the, of the resolution that he would, Jim?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the motion on the floor was to approve the ordinances as presented, and obviously the water ordinance does not contain those rates for the years 2017 through 20. So, my suggestion is that you make a motion to, someone make a motion to amend the main motion. In order to do that, and I've crafted some language here, so that you can do that in order to include those, and then we would just be able to administratively go ahead and make those changes in the tables.
Councilmember Marts.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the motion in order to include tables in ordinance 2747 that would increase the water rates in 2017 to 2020, and the percentages set forth in the whereas clauses of the ordinance.
Second. I'd moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we will act on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, as stated by Councilmember Marts, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
That carries six-one with Councilmember Shear in opposition. Moving back to the main motion, as amended, additional discussion or questions? All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2747 relating to water rates as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
That carries six-one with Councilmember Shear in opposition. Moving to our next one, adopt ordinance number 2748 relating to sewer rates and charges. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
That carries six-one with Councilmember Shear in opposition. Moving to adopt ordinance number 2749 relating to stormwater rates, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
That carries six-one with Councilmember Shear in operation, in opposition. That concludes our regular business for this evening. We'll now move to good of the order. Naina?
I'm just eager to invite you again to Veterans Day and thank Dave Wagner for a, a flag donation from the VFW for the earlier ceremony in Isaguahilans at 9:30 at Blakely Hall in Village Green. And I want to add to my comments last time about coming up, it's rain or shine, because we have a beautiful Blakely Hall facility that can provide the shelter we need if it is raining on that day. So come up at 9:30 on Veterans Day to honor our veterans in Isaguahilans. Thank you.
Thank you. Oma?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address a piece of documentation that this council received, I believe broadly, this afternoon, and it's from the Isaguah Valley Senior Center. As people know, we had asked, the committee had asked, had sort of stayed focused when looking at the funding request. We hadn't really looked at accusations, counter accusations, and flyers and counter flyers, and no trespasses, and pool tables and such things. We had really wanted to focus on the services that were going to be delivered for the ninety-nine thousand dollars. And so, some statements had been made in committee in regards to the relationship between IVSC and the food bank. And then we received some communications, and we asked some questions in full council, and this information that we received today is, is, is an attempt by the senior center board to respond to some of the questions that we have, and I, I encourage everyone to take a look at it. It's interesting, because it actually, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it does what they, what they hoped it would do. In regards to the issue of Director Jaren saying that the food bank discontinued food delivery without notice, actually, page 11 shows an email from Thursday, March 13th that shows that Food Bank Director Walters informed the senior center that they would no longer be providing food. Then further, Director Jaren said that after the food bank discontinued food service, the senior center attempted five times to communicate with the food bank. Well, page 15 shows that on March 19th, Director Jaren declined an offer from the food bank president Nieto to have a board-to-board meeting. Then on page 16, it shows that Director Walters responded to Isaguah Valley Senior Center. And then page 17 shows that President Nieto offered again a meeting between the boards that was also declined. There's also interesting things in here about the role of the board. I could only find one email communication from the board back to the, the food bank board, and it was a really, it was on page 12, it was a March 7th email that was really sort of accusatory and, and just didn't have to do with trying to build a bridge between the two boards. It had to do with the relationship between Directors Jaren and Walters. And then, and this is, as compared to Food Bank President Nieto, who tried multiple times to try to engage the senior center. The question of boundaries comes up frequently, the, in the documentation, the senior center refers to our Meals on Wheels program. Meals on Wheels is actually a program of senior services, which is a Seattle-based nonprofit. This issue of boundaries is funny. They, they want to claim the, the Meals on Wheels program, but at the same time, they want to isolate, or they chose to isolate Meals on Wheels at the time by attempting to require that people wanting to come visit senior services check in with Director Jaren, which doesn't seem to be an appropriate requirement against another nonprofit that's co-located in the same building. And then finally, it's really unfortunate. You just have to look at the front page, there's, there's a number of bullets on the front page, and the first one is, is wonderful. It says, "We are producing, we are pursuing a productive partnership with the food bank," which is great. However, bullets three and four are accusations that are unfounded, that have never gone anywhere, that, that regard, that are accusations about the Food and Clothing Bank that Director Walters had never seen before, that were just in this document, and they cut directly against the first bullet. They cut directly against the statement about wanting to have a more productive partnership. So I, putting it all together, honesty, professional engagement, and collaboration are the hallmarks of good human services leadership. The materials provided by the IVSC confirm for me, unfortunately, the absence of that leadership in the IVSC board and executive director. I don't know what to do about this. I, I hear from the community how much they don't want these services to go away, and we all value these services. But the, the, you know, I took a, we, our committee took a really narrow look and, and, you know, stayed away from a whole number of, of emotional sides, and even just looking at the core services that are delivered. What the, you know, this packet, I encourage everyone to take a look at this packet, it's really unfortunate. This is materials provided by the Isaguah Valley Senior Center, and it, and they just reinforce the concerns that, that came out of our committee and then were, were expressed in this, in this meeting room two weeks ago. So, I really encourage people to take a look at that. I don't know what it's all going to mean on Wednesday, but it, it has enhanced, unfortunately, rather than mitigated my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I wanted to share additional information as well. Thank you, Tola, for bringing up the topic. I wanted to, there's more reading material for you, because Paul and I sent a letter to a couple of the, the board members of IVS today, and the letter contains details about the reasons that Paul and I do not support the funding of senior services through IVS next year, at, at least at this point. And I felt compelled to share those details now for a couple of reasons. The first reason is that we have budget deliberations on Wednesday, and I wanted my fellow council members to know in advance where, where I stand. And because these are, this is not the letter, these are my notes, I'm saying aye, but I'm, I'm sure that, since it's from the letter, I'm sure Paul concurs. Anyway, the second reason is that because we've been hearing allegations about activities at the senior center for many months now, and the dialogue has been rather one-sided, in that the council hasn't talked much at all, except at the recent committee meeting. And I believe at this point, the, the senior community, and in fact, the entire community, they deserve to know what I am doing as an elected official to ensure that the general health and welfare of our senior citizens is being provided for and protected. Paul and I recently met with a couple of IVS board members in order to talk about the issues that we've been hearing about for several months. And more specifically, we wanted to discuss the current, the concerns that, that we have. One of those board members, I want to note, Judy Schreger articulated very well the goal that, that, that we all share, which is to provide the best quality senior services possible to the seniors in our community. And I want to thank Judy for clearly identifying that common purpose. I first want to make it very, very clear that I want to fund senior services. The question, however, as I view it, is this: are the best interests of seniors being served by IVS? And for me, right now, the answer is no. I, I want to remind everybody that the, the mayor included proposed funding for IVS in next year's budget only after IVS agreed to a set of conditions. The conditions were based on a review of IVS operations that was conducted by the mayor's office. Mayor would not have required such conditions had he not been concerned about IVS operations. Requiring conditions is an extraordinary action. So the fact that the conditions were a prerequisite to even including the funding as, as proposed should have served as notice to the IVS board that continued funding of IVS is a significant issue. Mayor's office also told the board that it lacked confidence in IVS's current executive director, Courtney Jaren. So the fact that Ms. Jaren's leadership skills are also being called into question by some council members cannot be a surprise. And I do share the opinion of the mayor's office, and that I lack confidence in Ms. Jaren's So here are some of the reasons behind my opinion. The city has heard complaints for many, many months regarding activities at the senior center. Those complaints have come in the form of testimony during public comment and council meetings, letters, emails, personal pleas, and phone calls to the mayor's office. I am not, and I repeat not, basing my opinion on the various he-said, she-said allegations. I base my opinion on the words and actions of IVS leadership alone. For example, trespassing. Trespassing has been used as a method of disposing unwanted disputes at the senior center. That tactic is wholly inappropriate and never should be used for resolving disagreements. Members of the senior center have been trespassed because they were, in the words of IVS leaders, and I quote, "agitators or detractors." Trespassing simply is not an appropriate tool under these circumstances. Moreover, it is ineffective. The effect of trespassing was to escalate the disputes. Also, intimidation. As members of the senior center began asking questions as disputes became more public, one response from IVS leadership was to post inside the senior center information about members who had called the mayor's office with complaints. The reasons for those postings were to respond to the inquiries of other members who wanted to know who was contacting the city. Since contact with the city is a matter of public record anyway, IVS leadership posted the information, so it was very public. IVS also wanted to be transparent, which is one of the reasons they posted the information. Even if the intentions behind those postings were genuine, it demonstrated poor judgment. Posting that information publicly only isolates and chastises members who are exercising their free right, their right to free speech without fear of repercussion. In other words, the posting served to divide and intimidate. I think those methods are shocking, particularly since seniors are a vulnerable population. Also, records requests have been denied. One such request was for five years of board minutes was denied. The board considered that request to be unreasonable, and it certainly may take time putting together five years of records. I don't know what IVS's legal obligations are regarding public, public records, or, sorry, are regarding records requests. Regardless, the denial is inconsistent with IVS's stated interest in transparency, and it serves to divide people and escalate suspicion. Another significant issue is agency relationships, which Tola mentioned earlier. Our city policy instructs that basic human services are to be delivered by agencies cooperating together. The reason for that is because no one agency can do it alone. I have significant doubts that Ms. Jaren is capable of fostering healthy partnerships with other agencies. For example, she intruded into the relationship between the food bank and the agency hosting Meals on Wheels at the senior center. She required representatives of the food bank to make requests directly to her before visiting with representatives of Meals on Wheels. Her actions underscore my concern about her ability to work cooperatively with other agencies. Ms. Jaren also has failed to take any responsibility for the failed relationship between the food bank and IVS. Her words and actions are divisive. And then there's the letter that was dated June 25th, 2015. That letter that Ms. Jaren authored and sent to the IVS membership is unconscionable propaganda. The letter purports to, and I quote, "provide some of the facts behind the current challenges, challenges facing Isaguah Senior Center," unquote. The letter does no such thing. Rather, the letter is full of anger, name-calling, and unsubstantiated and shocking allegations. For example, Ms. Jaren accuses murder. In the words, in the letter say, quote, "A group of seniors bully a vulnerable senior to death," unquote. She also publicly denounces anyone who takes complaints outside the senior center, insisting that all complaints should be brought directly to her or the board. Ironically, also in that letter, she refers to the senior center as a safe haven. She also repeatedly calls the people who complain liars and in need of professional help. As a council member, I hear unsubstantiated allegations regularly, but I will not tolerate similar conduct by the person administering services to our seniors. The letter calls into serious question the judgment of the people who authored it, the people who approved it being sent to the senior population, and the people, the people who took no action in response to it being sent. It is, at best, an inappropriate response to the controversies brought on by trespassing and intimidation. At worst, it is tantamount to bullying or abuse of power. It is based on the above conduct and more that I do not support status quo funding of IVS. In my opinion, IVS lacks effective leadership. Because Ms. Jaren is tasked with the day-to-day operations of the senior center, I attribute the current controversies and problems to her lack of effective leadership. I also believe the problems have been brewing for a number of years. I have no doubt that Ms. Jaren has done some wonderful things for the senior center. Unfortunately, she has become a very divisive figure. It's my understanding that the board has approved all of Ms. Jaren's activities. That's what I was told by board members. That doesn't excuse Ms. Jaren's conduct. It actually tells me that the board has lost its way, needs to figure out a way to get back on track. I don't make the suggestion of a change in leadership lightly, but that's, that's what I think needs to happen. And it is controversial, I realize that. But there is much healing to be done in the community, and a new leader can provide that opportunity. The IVS board is empowered to make such changes, and I would encourage the board to explore the options. Again, I want to state very clearly that I, I would like to fund senior services, but the leadership of the current provider of those services has instilled in me a lack of confidence. If IVS can demonstrate a commitment to a leadership change that ensures we are on a path toward healing and healthier operations and... and relationships, then I could support funding. Thank you.
Anything else for good of the order? Council President Winterstein?
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. And I acknowledge also how you, those were Stacy's own comments, and she presented it as her own comments, and, and I do appreciate that. But, and they reflect the letter that we spent quite a bit of time putting together over the weekend. And I fully support and echo Stacy's comments this evening. It is, and I join her in make, and feel duty-bound at this time that members of our community who have been coming to us and looking to us for some type of feedback and some type of reaction, that it's time to make a public comment. And, and I think the letter summarizes things very well. It's now part of the public record. And, and I want to emphasize, those that may question this, that we keep getting accused of responding to what's been happening in the public. And I, and I want to point out what Stacy, I'm going to reiterate Stacy just did. Trespassing was a fact. Posting of, those who contacted the mayor's office was a fact. The letter of June 25th, that's a, that's a written record. And then the action that Martz mentioned again this evening about inability to collaborate with the food bank, that's part of the record as well. And so, that's the basis for my conclusion and for my statements that are in that letter as well. Thank you.
Any addition?
Just a clarification. Paul, when you say trespassing was a fact, and you went down your list, what you meant was that those board actions of taking trespasses in action was a fact.
Yeah, those happened.
You're attacking, the things that you listed are board actions by the current Isaguay Valley Senior Center board.
And leadership, yes. And, and executive director. Those are actions from those.
Actions from the board. Thanks.
Good question.
Councilmember Milligan, followed by Councilmember Shear.
Thank you. It does bear mentioning. I appreciate the challenge maybe that you all have placed to speak something of your mind in this very important matter. And we've spent time listening to our citizens and our seniors. And, and I know there's a lot of he-said, she-said in those emails, but I read all of them. And I'm looking for something. I'm looking for something in each one, you know? Where is the kernel, the real matter here that I need to deliberate upon? And I want to thank Councilmember Goodman for making a fantastic inventory and for the research and the careful work that you did. Thank you very much. And Paul, thank you for working with her. And Tola, too, for your attention to this matter, because I can tell you, it hasn't been easy to sift through all of the input. It's also been heartbreaking. But thank you for making those points clear because they were there, but your organization helps very much. Thank you.
Councilmember Shear?
I have a question, but let me get there. I don't know yet what I'm going to decide on this issue. I made a recommendation in committee, and I'm viewing additional information that's being presented as if it were a reconsideration request to my original recommendation. And that bears a very high burden to reconsider a decision. And so I don't know, ultimately, my, my thoughts are not as well coalesced as Stacy's presentation. But I'm definitely considering all the information presented. I, I do have a question, but first, I just want to say, the, the audience comments I heard this evening were very discouraging and disparaging. And there were many that, I wouldn't even say they bordered on ad hominem attacks. They were absolutely ad hominem attacks on individuals. And this are from folks who are supporters of the administration of the center and against the administration of the center. And that is not the kind of culture that I like to see in this community. And I'm frankly very disappointed in the ad hominem attacks that were presented to us this evening. It makes me want to simply turn them off. And I don't do that because I listen to audience comments. And I usually take notes, in fact, on what audience comments are. But folks need to understand, when you start attacking individuals on a personal level, that's, that's not the right way to go about conveying your message on this issue. So here's my question, and maybe it's directed towards our council leadership primarily. If the, if the recommendation that you're making in terms of not funding is the allocation, and I think Stacy, in your comments, you referenced the, the current level of allocation for the human services funding, which I think is $99,000. That's in the proposed budget, somewhere around there.
Plus, I think the proposal adds an additional $65,000.
Okay. So if that is not funded out of miscellaneous human services budget, wherever it's found in, in the budget document, the effect of doing that is to presumably cut some programs, perhaps staffing, its operational funding for the center? Or, I mean, is, is that simply what's being suggested through your comments? Or is there something broader because we've heard calls from individuals to simply, I don't know what the right word would be, de-privatize, nationalize the, the Senior Center into a city-run facility run by the Parks Department? Because the, the practical effect of cutting 99,000 or 65,000 more, in my mind, does not do anything. The, the current administration remains. It's, the council has no power to unseat a director or change the board of any nonprofit organization. And, and the suggestions that somehow we could do that are simply mistaken. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out what you're hoping to accomplish, other than sending a message, in terms of what the practical effect of not including funding in the fiscal year budget does? Or are you suggesting something significantly broader that the council take action on?
It's not a, it's not a hidden, much broader message. It is exactly what it is. That my first preference would be to have the current third-party provider, which is IVS, clean up the house, so to speak, and figure out a way to deliver senior services in the way that they should be delivered. And, but that, as you pointed out, that's in their control and not mine. That would be my, that would be my preference.
Budgetarily, what, what are you asking us to consider doing on Wednesday night? Not include the human services funding? Because that, that doesn't shut down.
I'm going to, I'm going to interject here. On this coming Wednesday, we will be discussing the nonprofit funding. And I haven't determined, as facilitator of that meeting, whether or not we're going to be voting on any one of those line items on Wednesday night. We have another meeting already scheduled for the Tuesday, the 10th. And I think this topic, if additional time is required for some of the parties involved, then I'm going to make sure that they have that time.
So, any additional for the good of the order? Seeing none, then, we are adjourned.